The best place to work.
I love working here.
I feel very blessed.
I love it here.
I look forward to coming to work every day, being a part of this team.
Like a family away from home.
Where everyone feels like everybody knows their name.
The city that supports you. We see that with our benefits.
A pension, vacation days, job security.
Being able to be heard. We feel valued. We feel respected.
Lee Summit is a very progressive city.
It's growing. It's thriving.
We have this drive towards not just doing a job, but doing it with a spirit of excellence. I had the opportunity to continue to grow regardless of 30-plus years doing this kind of work.
It's more than just dollars and cents.
We're here really to give back.
Providing a service to better a community.
To go out and serve people.
To be a part of something bigger than yourself. If I would have known what I know now, years ago, I would have been here much sooner.
Hello, Lee Summit. I'm Jordan. Here's your flash briefing for the week of November 3rd. City Council will meet for a regular session Tuesday night at 6:00 in council chambers in City Hall. Meetings are open to the public or watch live on the city's YouTube channel. If you can't watch, catch the recorded meeting on demand on the YouTube channel or by subscribing to the Council debrief newsletter, which breaks down three to four key agenda items. Subscribe at cityofls.net. Join in celebrating veterans on November 8th and honoring those who served our country at the Veterans Day Parade. This year honors the 250th birthday of the Army and Marines, as well as the 50th anniversary of the end of the Vietnam War. The parade will begin at 11:00 a.m. at Lee Summit High School. Find more details about the event and parade route at downtownls.org. Mark your calendar for the hanger two ribbon cutting at the Kansas City Lee Summit Regional Airport on November 13th at 2:00 p.m. This is something you don't want to miss. More details to come. And stay connected with the city. Be sure to follow us on Facebook, X, and Instagram. Already do and enjoy the videos you've been seeing? Then head to our YouTube channel and hit subscribe to see similar content. Thanks for listening and have a great week.
Keeping 500 miles of public sewer lines flowing keeps utility costs low and our environment healthy. The Lee Summit Water Utilities Operations Team does this every day. Sewer lines can be blocked with everything from roots to flushable wipes to food grease. When a potential blockage is identified, teams use detailed mapping to locate access points.
My camera's at 18:038.
A camera truck parks at one end of the sewer line and a jet truck at the other. The camera truck carries a rover-type camera, which the team lowers into the manhole. The operator then drives the camera into the pipe where it views and records from its adjustable lens. Here, it can identify the cause and precise location of the blockage. The jet truck will then use high-pressure water to remove the blockage. Starting at the opposite end of the line, the operator inserts the jet head into the manhole. Pressurized water shoots out of the head, clearing out debris and propelling it forward. The camera observes this process and the two operators communicate via walkie-talkie to coordinate movement.
Hold it right there. Go ahead and fire it up, half pressure. I'm in front of you.
Once the jet head has passed the blockage, the operator reels it back in. The camera can then inspect the pipe to see if the blockage is cleared.
Yeah, go ahead and pull out. We're done.
With the job complete, the camera is removed, cleaned, and returned to the truck, and the crew moves on to the next job. In addition to addressing identified problems, the team will systematically check every line in the city in a five-year period, keeping costs low and our community healthy today and for years to come.
Officers en route. Night 14. Armed robbery.
Waterway Car Wash is coming to the streets of West Pryor. It'll provide an express or full-service car wash in a convenience store on location. Waterway Car Wash will open in fall 2025. Encho and Agave is coming to Summit Fair. The restaurant features Mexican food with a made-from-scratch menu in a casual setting. Encho and Agave will open in fall 2025. Henline's Boutique and Home has arrived downtown. The boutique offers a curated collection of clothing, specialized accessories, and trendy home goods. Shop the latest styles today. Midwest Avionics and Summit Flight Academy are building a hangar at the Lee Summit Municipal Airport. The repair station and flight school's very own hangar will open for operation in fall 2025. The joint operations facility is being built next to police headquarters. The building will house fire department administration and training teams, city emergency operations, the traffic operations center, and a co-located fire and police communications center. Completion of the project is slated for spring 2026.
I have always volunteered in the community and I was always really involved, but then I ran for school board. Whenever I got done with my term, I just felt like I had more to give. It's always been my goal from day one is to get everyone in the community connected and working together. And I always called it a spirit of community. Well, mayor's 24/7 and I have a job. I've had to work really hard at compartmentalizing, is what I call it. So during this time, I'm going to do work. During this time, I'm going to be a mayor, even though I can get a call at any moment about mayor stuff. And so I've had to even work that much harder at setting aside time for myself or for family. So I like to exercise. I like to work out. Hillary's my wife. She actually goes to work out with me as well. We do like to go downtown to the shops. We make sure we maximize our time together. I've got two kids as well and we spend a lot of time with them, or whatever time they will give us these days. And I have a dog. I think most people that know me know I have to have a dog. We have so much development going on and we're growing fairly quickly, so we have a lot of infrastructure needs. And sometimes we have gaps in infrastructure and we've always managed to get by, but with this kind of growth, we're really having to be creative and look at our options and just have a good plan for water, sewer, roads, and more. If we want to grow the most healthy way, we need a diverse economy. We do have a lot of retail that's opened up here and there's been new construction for retail. We really need to focus in the future on bringing some, you know, well-paying jobs here, good, strong employers that want to be located in this incredible community of now 101,000 people. A lot of our workforce does commute to work still, so they leave Lee Summit to go to work. And it'd be nice if we could keep some of those citizens right here in our community. The times I feel most proud are actually when I'm in the community and I see the community come together.
We have Buddy in the house.
He's the mayor.
The tree lighting is always very fun. I always feel very proud. It's just a great warm feeling. The same thing goes for when the council will do something and we come together and make a good decision together. There's been a few of those that I just, you go home feeling like a winner. And one of them was when we put together the downtown farmer's market, when we bought the land, and it became real, you know, all that hard work. But also the Diversity and Inclusion Commission, that was months and months of discussions and conversations that were really hard to have. And we went ahead and moved forward as a council altogether, and I was very, very proud of that. And there are a few things that the citizens have done that have really helped us tremendously. First, in the middle of a pandemic, they passed a use tax, which is a way for us to collect sales tax whenever someone purchases online. That helps shore up our revenues so that we can continue to provide as high-quality services that our city provides. And it helps us take care of our employees. It helps us with our public safety and more. So I can't be more thankful to the citizens for that. Lee Summit has the opportunity to have a major impact on the economy in the Kansas City area. We already, as an economy, are rolling along with such a high median income. We have an amazing workforce here that are paying taxes. They're paying property taxes. They're paying sales taxes. They're keeping our economy rolling. And we really are getting the attention of all our neighbors. And I think that what's going to happen is you're going to see the opportunity for us to really get everybody's attention when businesses start moving here, bigger businesses and more. You should try to find a way to give back to the community, whether it's at the city level, you know, citizen committees, or just participating in some of our community conversations whenever we have those opportunities. It's worth coming out of your shell or taking, you know, that leap of faith and just showing up and saying, "What can I do or how can I help?" The more we do this together, the more wonderful the community is.
Okay, welcome, everyone. Would you please rise from the invitation and stay standing for the Pledge of Allegiance?
Heavenly Father, thank you for this day and the chance to come together in service. May our hearts be open, our minds be clear, and our words be thoughtful as we work for the good of our city. Amen.
A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Again, welcome, everyone. I'm calling to order the City of Lee Summit Regular Session number 54. Can I get a roll call, please?
Councilmember Hodges.
Here.
Councilmember Rader.
Present.
Councilmember Pryor.
Here.
Councilmember Shields.
Here.
Councilmember Funk.
Here.
Councilmember Lovell. Councilmember Carlisle.
Present.
Mayor Protem Lopez.
Here.
Mayor Baird.
Here. Okay, next item on the agenda is the approval of the agenda. I have a motion to adopt the agenda by Councilmember Hodges, seconded by Councilmember Funk. Discussion? Seeing none, please cast your vote. All votes are in. Please record the vote. It does pass unanimously. Thank you. Next is the approval of the consent agenda. I have a motion to adopt the consent agenda by Councilmember Shields, seconded by Councilmember Rader. Council, discussion? Seeing none, please cast your vote. All votes are in. Please record the vote. That's also unanimous, 8-0. Thank you. Next, we have Council Roundtable. These are items of general interest, things going on in the community and maybe in your district. Councilmember Shields.
Thank you, Mayor. This weekend, there will be the Holiday Open House and the Veterans Day Parade both downtown. So hopefully folks will come out and support local and support our veterans.
What's the weather supposed to be like?
Cold.
Is it? It's always cold on the parade day. Mid-40s? Okay. Good. It's at noon. The parade's at noon. Okay, thank you. All right. Well, looks like we get to dive right into a bunch of business tonight. We have public hearings. Quite a few of them right here in a row, so I'm going to close the regular session and open the public hearing in the matter of Agenda Item 4A. This is a public hearing on special use permit renewal for telecommunications tower 207 Southeast Douglas Street, Global Sign Acquisitions. Globe, oh yeah. Global Signal Acquisitions II LLC is the applicant. Would all those wishing to speak to this matter please rise and be sworn in by the city clerk? All right.
Good evening. My name is Paul Peckins. I am the agent for the applicant, better known as Crown Castle. My work address is 8020 Katy Freeway, Houston, Texas, 77024. I will spare everybody repetitive presentations and yield my time to staff, but I am happy to answer any questions that you all may have.
Very good. Thank you.
All right. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, fellow councilmembers. Shannon McGuire, planning manager. Please enter into the record Exhibit A, list of Exhibits 1 through 14.
Please enter into the record Exhibit A, 1 through 14.
All right, before us today. I apologize. This is actually the wrong. I got backwards. All right. All right, before us today is a special use permit renewal to allow for the continued operation of a 180-foot monopole communications tower. With this application, there is no proposed increase in tower height or expansion of the tower compound for facilities. The property, the site, or the tower sits on a .97-acre property along the southeast side of Douglas there, Fire Station 1, just behind the fire station, kind of sandwiched in between City Hall and the parking garage. The tower is compatible with the surrounding land uses and is screened by a brick-and-closure. Again, it's located on the backside of Fire Station 1, which does rely on the tower for its communications and to support its operations. The tower does provide a utility that is necessary for the continued growth of the city and the development of the city as a whole. The applicant did host a neighborhood meeting. No attendees at that meeting, nor has staff received any comments in support or in opposition of the tower itself. The subject site, or the tower, has been on the subject site for nearly 30 years and renewal does not, again, does not include any kind of alterations or changes to the tower itself. So with the condition of approval as outlined here and in the staff letter, the application does meet the Ignite Conference of Plan and the UDO, and I can yield for any questions you may have at this time.
Thank you. Are there any questions for staff for the applicant? Yes, Councilmember Carlisle.
Thank you, Mayor. Could you tell me, it's been there for 30 years. Has there been any maintenance issues with it?
No.
Okay, two questions and that one question. Maintenance issues as of they need to be kept up better or anything breaking or falling off, et cetera?
None that I know of. As part of the special use permit renewal process, they do have to submit an updated and valid inspection. So with that, we look at that, and if there's any deficiencies, they must correct that prior to moving forward.
Okay, so they did have a valid recent inspection on this one and had no issues?
Yes.
Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Rader.
Thank you, Mayor. So perpetuity, you mean they will never come back again for a special permit use?
Correct.
Okay. That's what I wanted to make sure. Thank you. Thanks, Mayor.
Thank you. Okay, I'm not seeing any more questions from council. Is there anyone here this evening that wishes to speak for or against this application? Please come forward. Okay, thank you. Are there any additional questions from the council? Okay, does the applicant care to make any comment? Thank you. Hearing no further testimony, I'm closing the public hearing and reopening the regular session. Is there any council discussion on this application? Yes, Councilmember Carlisle.
Thank you, Mayor. It's not really discussion, but I just wondered if you could explain to anybody who might be listening or watching why they don't have to come back in front of us?
Due to the Uniform Wireless Communications Infrastructure Development Act, the state has preempted the city from imposing time limits on special use permits for telecommunication towers.
Okay, so if there are ever any issues with this, there is nothing we can do about it because our state legislators have said that cities can't control that anymore.
We still have our standard property maintenance issue codes that we could address any kind of maintenance issues with that. We just cannot put a time limit on the special use permit.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you. Any additional questions from council? Okay, hearing no further testimony, I'm closing the public hearing and reopening the regular session. Is there any council discussion on this application? Okay. Seeing no, oh yeah, seeing no further discussion or questions. Councilmember Hodges, would you please read Bill Number 25-204?
Thank you. I advance to second reading Bill Number 25-204, an ordinance granting a special use permit for a telecommunication tower in District CPD on land located at 207 Southeast Douglas Street, all in accordance with the provisions of Chapter 33, the Unified Development Ordinance of Lee Summit Code of Ordinances for the City of Lee Summit, Missouri.
Thank you. I have a motion to move to second reading, Bill Number 2025-7185. Now, Bill Number 25-204. By Councilmember Hodges, seconded by Councilmember Carlisle. Any discussion? Seeing none, please cast your vote. All votes are in. Please record the vote. It does pass 8-0. Thank you. We're going to go ahead and move to the next public hearing. I'm closing the regular session and opening the public hearing in the matter of Agenda Item 4B. Public hearing for a special use permit renewal for telecommunications tower 1850 Southeast Hamblen Road, Global Sign Acquisitions LLC is the applicant. Would all those rise? Anyone here wishing to speak to this matter, please rise and be sworn in by the city clerk. Mr. McGuire.
All right, good evening. Shannon McGuire, planning manager. Please enter to the record Exhibit A, list of Exhibits 1 through 14.
Please enter into the record Exhibit A, 1 through 14.
All right, it's going to seem like a little bit like Groundhog Day, but we'll go through this. The applicant requests special, or sorry. The applicant requests approval of special use permit renewal for the continued operation of the existing 180-foot telecommunication tower. Again, there is no proposed increase in the height or the tower compound boundaries as a part of this special use permit renewal. As you can see through here in the aerial photo, the surrounding areas kind of categorized primarily by industrial, as well as city facilities to the east there. There is a single family to the north as well. The telecommunication tower is compatible with the surrounding land uses. The facility itself is screened by existing vegetation, and the tower and all equipment are around 94 feet from the nearest property line. The applicant did host a neighborhood meeting. No attendees from the public as well, and staff has not received any comments in support or opposition to the project itself. This particular site has been the location of a telecommunication tower for nearly 30 years as well and has not had any negative surrounding impact to the surrounding area. Again, the renewal itself does not incorporate, or does not include any alterations or expansions of the tower. And so with the condition of approval as outlined here and in the staff letter, the application meets the UDO and the Ignite Conference of Plan, and I can yield for any questions at this time.
Okay, thank you. Questions, comments, or not comments, questions? Councilmember Carlisle.
Thank you. Same questions, and I'll have them for all of it if you just want to save my breath.
Yeah, so given the passage of the Uniform Wireless Communications Infrastructure Development Act, the state has preempted the city from imposing time limits on special use permits when they come before us with regards to telecommunications towers.
Thank you. And also, any maintenance issues?
Any maintenance issues, we can address through our standard property maintenance codes.
And this one doesn't have a history of any and does have a?
This one does not have a history of any property maintenance issues. If any do arise, we can address it through that. Again, with the application, they are required to submit an inspection form and address any deficiencies at that time before moving forward.
Perfect, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions, council? Okay, is there anyone that wishes, here tonight, that wishes to speak for or against this application? Please come forward. Seeing none, are there any additional questions from council? Does the applicant care to make any further comment? Thank you. Hearing no further testimony, I'm closing the public hearing and reopening the regular session. Is there any council discussion on this application? Seeing no further questions or comments, Councilmember Funk, would you please read Bill number 25-205?
Thank you, Mayor. I advance the second reading, Bill number 25-205, an ordinance granting a special use permit for a telecommunications tower in District PI, planned industrial on land located at 1850 Southeast Hamblen Road, all in accordance with the provisions of Chapter 33, the Unified Development Ordinance of Lee Summit Code of Ordinances for the City of Lee Summit, Missouri.
Thank you. We have a motion to move to second reading, Bill number 25-205, by Councilmember Funk, seconded by Councilmember Hodges. Discussion? Seeing none, please cast your vote. All votes are in, please accord the vote. It does move to second reading unanimously. Thank you. Going to close the public, the regular session, again, and open the public hearing in the matter of agenda item 4C, public hearing for a special use permit renewal for a telecommunications tower, 1749 Southeast Langsford Road, Global Sign Acquisitions LLC is the applicant. Would all those wishing to speak to this matter, please rise to be sworn in by the
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, fellow council members, Shannon McGuire, planning manager. Please enter into the record Exhibit A, list of exhibits one through 14.
Please enter in the record Exhibit A, one through 14.
The application before us today seeks approval of renewal for a special use permit to allow for the continued operation of the 100-foot monopole telecommunications tower. With the application, there is no proposed increase in tower height or expansion of the tower compound boundaries. As you can see from the map here, the surrounding area is categorized primarily by commercial development with some residential north across Southeast Langsford Road. The site is fully developed with its primary access to the site along Southeast Todd George Parkway. The Ignite Conference of Plan does promote different strategies for the long-term growth and resiliency of the city. One of those objectives in that comprehensive plan is to maintain high-quality infrastructure. Approval of the special use permit renewal will continue to support the provisioning of wireless cellular service, which is critical for everyday communication and business operations within the city. The applicant did host a neighborhood meeting. There were no attendees, as well as the staff has not received any comments in support or opposition of the subject property, or subject application. The existing telecommunications tower is compatible with the surrounding commercial land uses. The equipment is screened and fenced by a brick enclosure, and the tower is located 65 feet from the closest property line. This particular tower, telecommunications tower, has been on site for roughly 25 years. As part of the application, the applicant did submit an inspection form. Any deficiencies found have been corrected before they were allowed to move forward. So with the conditions of approval as here, this application does meet the Ignite Conference of Plan as well as all UDO requirements, and I can yield for any questions at this time.
Councilmember Carlisle.
I'm pretty sure he answered my question that time, so.
Did he answer about the?
Do you want to go ahead and explain to us why this is in foreverness?
All right, 67.5094 of the RSMO, of the Uniform Wireless Communications Infrastructure Deployment Act prohibits the city from imposing time limits on telecommunications towers, special use permits.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions from council? Is there anyone here this evening that wants to speak in favor or in opposition to this application? Please come forward. Are there any additional questions from council? Does the applicant care to make any further comment? Thank you. Seeing, hearing no further testimony, I'm closing the public hearing and reopening the regular session. Any council discussion on this application? Seeing none, Councilmember Rader, would you please read Bill number 25-206?
Thank you, Mayor. I advance the second reading, Bill number 25-206, an ordinance granting a special use permit for a telecommunications tower in District CP2, Planned Community Commercial District, on land located at 1749 Southeast Langsford Road, all in accordance with the provisions of Chapter 33, the Unified Development Ordinance of Lee Summit Code of Ordinances for the City of Lee Summit, Missouri.
Thank you. A motion to move to second reading, Bill number 25-206, by Councilmember Rader, seconded by Councilmember Funk. Discussion? Seeing none, please cast your vote. All votes are in, please accord the vote. That does move to second reading unanimously. Thank you. We're going to close the regular session one more time, open the public hearing in the matter of agenda item 4D, a public hearing for special use permit renewal for telecommunications tower 1310 Northeast Colburn Road, Global Signal Acquisitions LLC is the applicant. Would all those wishing to speak to this matter, please rise to be sworn in by the city clerk.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, planning, or council members, Shannon McGuire, planning manager. Please enter into the record Exhibit A, list of exhibits one through 14.
Please enter into the record Exhibit A, one through 14.
All right, the application before us today seeks approval of a special use permit renewal to allow for the continued operation of the existing 100-foot monopole telecommunications tower. Again, as the other applications, there is no proposed increase in tower height or expansion of the tower compound associated with this application. The subject site is about, little under an acre of land located at 1310 Northeast Colburn Road. The site is fenced with a gravel lay-down yard inside that fence area. The Ignite Conference of Plan does promote various strategies to support long-term growth and resiliency in the city. One of those established goals within that comprehensive plan is to maintain high-quality infrastructure. The approval of a special use permit will continue to support provisioning of wireless communication services, which is critical for everyday communications and business operations within the city. The applicant did host a neighborhood meeting. No members of the public attended that meeting, and staff has not received any comments in support or in opposition of that particular project. The subject site has been a telecommunications tower for over 25 years. The proposed renewal, again, does not entail any expansion or increase in height of the As part of the application process, the applicant did submit an inspection form, and all identified deficiencies, if there were any, were addressed prior to moving forward today's hearing. The single condition of approval does grant the special use permit for in perpetuity. The reason for that is the Uniform Wireless Communications Infrastructure Deployment Act does prohibit the city from imposing its own, on its accord, limitation on the duration of the special use permit, so that's why this one is in perpetuity as well. So with that, I can yield for any questions you may have.
Questions from council? Councilmember Carlisle.
Thank you. Could you just back up two pages? I saw something that I didn't see when I looked earlier. Right here in purple, it says decommission date. You see it?
Yep.
Can you tell me what that is?
I will defer to the applicant to that.
Okay.
It says decommission date. Correct. It's just simply removing one of the carrier's equipment, so when Crown has it in their system, they call it a decommission.
Okay, I was just making sure it's not taking it down like months ago, so, thank you.
All right, thank you. Any other questions from council? Is there anyone here this evening that wishes to speak in favor or against the application? Please come forward. Are there any additional questions from council? Does the applicant care to make any further comment? Thank you. Hearing no further testimony, I'm closing the public hearing and reopening the regular session. Is there any council discussion on this application? Seeing none. Is this Councilmember Rader? Do you have this one? No, this is, this one's Councilmember Shields. Would you please, Councilmember Shields, would you please read Bill number 25-207?
Certainly. I move to second reading of Bill number 25-207, an ordinance granting a special use permit renewal for a telecommunications tower in District AG Agricultural on land located at 1310 Northeast Colburn Road for a period of time in perpetuity, all in accordance with Article 6, the Unified Development Ordinance for the City of Lee Summit, Missouri.
Thank you. We have a motion to move to second reading, Bill number 25-207, by Councilmember Shields, seconded by Councilmember Hodges. Seeing none, please cast your vote. All votes are in, please accord the vote. It does pass eight-zero, goes to second reading. Thank you for coming in tonight. Okay, that takes us to agenda item five, which is public comments. We do have a public comment portion of the council meeting, which is time where a public may address counsel on any matter listed in the council agenda for the meeting or directly related to the operations of the City of Lee Summit, except for those matters that are the subject of a public hearing, requiring that testimony to be sworn in. Each person wishing to provide public comment will be given three minutes to speak. And with that, I have three people that have signed in to speak. Let's start with Ms. Zach Alshewish? Have I said it correctly?
Close enough.
Close enough? I'm sorry. How do you say it?
Um, Alchowish.
Alchowish?
Yep, yep. No one gets it right, though, so you did pretty well.
Thank you.
Hey, thank you, guys. I just want to say, I was very happy and encouraged to see this council engage in prayer before they met today. You know, our nation and our fundamental liberties were designed and built off of Christian values. Unfortunately, our federal, state, and local governments, including this one, no longer act in accordance with these Christian values. Instead, they go over their way to intringe on our God-given liberties and on the citizens whom they were elected to serve. In my hand, I've got this ream of paper, 500 pages and 20 pounds. If I wanted to print out the city's municipal code, I would need three full reams of this paper, 1,476 pages filled with ordinances which are used to turn law-abiding citizens into criminals, allowing the city to arrest them, extort them, marginalize them, and use a whole arsenal of lawfare to quash any dissent against this local government and any potentially shady dealings. The purpose of this document is not to protect the people or ensure the prosperity of our community. The city needs these laws so that they can be weaponized against anyone who seeks to hold them accountable or who even just goes against the grain. I've lived in Lee Summit since 2017, and I've now been drugged through the court system here twice. Once for the heinous crime of exercising at Legacy Rack Center without wearing a mask, just as I had done every day for the three years prior. And now my wife and I have four charges against us because we had the audacity to continue owning a dog without asking the city for permission to have it that year. That's right, every year I need your permission to continue owning my pet. We've got traffic laws, parking laws, zoning laws, pet laws. We even have laws about where you can and cannot stand in public. Page 1120 of your municipal code. You have to go through 1,000 pages to find it, but it's there. As the kids say, you guys are just doing way too much. And if you're curious why people are so disillusioned with and disenfranchised by their government, look no further than the experience I just shared with you. When you create and enforce these victimless crimes, you drive a wedge between the people and their government. You also endanger law enforcement by turning them into revenue generators and compliance enforcement for the city. But most importantly, you subjugate, oppress, and endanger the citizens of this community. This council should not be adding any more pages to the code tonight, or next week, or any other night. And you should not be scheming new ways to spend our money. If you have any interest in serving the citizens, you should drop all the proposed ordinances now and begin reforming and removing hundreds of pages of these codes. You know, my goal speaking tonight is to help effect change in the government by helping get people more involved. You know, nobody, for the most part, comes to these meetings because they're busy working, and they trust you to look after their best interest. And I think you guys have failed in many ways on that. Now, despite the fact that you will continue to press these oppressive and restrictive ordinances, I don't want our relationship to be contentious one. I'm going to be here weekly, talking with you guys, going into further detail, so I look forward to seeing you next week and the week after. Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, next is Donald E., I'm not sure, Maine? Yeah, come on forward, please, sir.
Good evening, councilor and mayors. I move back in this city for one reason, to be safe and secure in this city, because the police department and the great community keeps everybody safe. But there's one slight problem on this. I'm talking about case number 2300032375. This defendant has been charged, convicted of several different crimes in the past. I can't say his name because you guys won't let me. Corrupt some time dealing with this violations of order protection by the defendant in this case. Dispute, nothing, the courts, multiple times, knowing fine the courts, actions continue and not seeing any kind of enforcement accountability from the courts or the police department. April 28, 2025, the city prosecutor did file charges, but she filed charges for harassment, not for violation of order protection, a state crime, makes it a felony, but they say that during a misdemeanor instead. July the 25th, I filed a extension with the Jackson County Courts to stint out my order protection because this guy has repeatedly violated the orders repeatedly, multiple times. On August 19th, I was told that the defendant would be there so the police department and the process server can serve him. Behold, the, there is that the prosecutor and the victim advocate told me there will be no continuance by the defendant at all. Well, that's a lie. I don't know how else I can say it. It allows him to come in early, get a continuance, and sneak out, knowing there's an order coming down for against him. And when I asked for the appeal to the judge, the prosecutor and the victim advocate refused to allow me to speak to them. I have a, I have a right, I'm a victim. Eventually, I was able to speak to them. And she have ordered a fingerprint be done, a specific date and time, and when the courts called him and told him he was ordered to show up, he told the courts, I don't have time for this mess. If I would have done that, I would be in jail by now. Some time and communicate, at the same time, communication from the courts to prosecutor, victim advocate, office has stopped, had left me without updates, without support, without enforcement, without continuing verify, very same things that order was meant to protect. I'm asking the key counselors, mayors, please review this matter, ensure the order protection is being taken seriously to help make sure the victims like me are not getting ignored by the system that's supposed to protect us. Thank you. I have include examples and evidence 1A through F. If action does not take, I will take unnecessary actions against the city, including lawsuit. Thank you, have a great day.
All right, thank you. All right, we have one more. Ms. Ballinwider?
Teresa Fullinviter, 5201 Northeast Maybrook Road. That's my dad, Henry Fullinviter. He was an apple grower. That's my mom. Obviously, years in between, those pictures taken, animals gravitated toward her. The day I was arrested was November 25th, 2022. The person I wanted was my mom. When I was down on the ground, that's who I wanted, was my mom. This is a document that I received from the city. This is what you get when the city wants you to shut up and stay off your own land. They requested to revoke my bond. They requested that I wear a GPS monitoring device. They requested that I be charged $2,000 on each of these charges. I think it was Brett Sinclair and maybe Sidney Beeman that both said that they were just going to rack the charges up, rack the trespassing charges up. I was told to stay away, no contact with the Mullins family, not a big deal, didn't deal with them anyway. A conditioned defendant, stay away from 5261 Northeast Maybrook Road. Well, that was a little bit hard in that they put their house behind my backyard. But had they put the house where it should have gone, the public wouldn't have been ha- wouldn't have been required to pay for a private storm drainage system masquerading as a public storm drainage system, $157,000-plus dollars. And they actually wouldn't have needed to rezone. They didn't need to rezone. They just needed to put their house where it needed to go. So my question is, did anyone at the City of Lies Summit show the 1122, 2022 video from Police Officer Michael Iceberg's body camera to Ross Nygro?
All right, thank you.
The entire video?
Thank you. Okay, we're going to keep going tonight. We have some more business to discuss. Agenda Item 6A is a presentation for conceptual economic development incentive request for Midstates Warehouse Expansion, 420 Southeast Thompson Drive. Midstates Distributing LLC is the applicant. We'll try to, it's not, it's not a public hearing, but we'll try to kind of use the same type of format. Questions first, and then we can give opinions later. So you want to start us off, Mr. Bushett?
Yes. David Bushett, Chief Counsel of Economic Development and Planning. This is a conceptual presentation for you to consider the incentive request by Midstates. The developer will make their presentation first, and I will provide my comments after, after they provide their presentation.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening, mayor, council. It's great to see everybody tonight. My name is Kurt Peterson. I'm here on behalf of Midstates Distributing LLC. With me, I have a, I have a, I don't usually get this, I've had this much fun, but there's a lot of people that came into town for this presentation and to be with you. So I thought I'd just acknowledge them so you could get some faces and names. So I have Midstate CEO Tom Malky, which is right here. I have Kerry McGuire, our CFO. I have Jeff Rash, our COO. Then we have Rick Mez, the director of warehouse that's actually here that we'll talk about, the existing facility. He's a Lee Summit resident, so that's good. And then the last person, last but not least, that I wanted to introduce that I just met was Bill Mills. He's actually the former mayor of Harrisonville. I don't know if anybody got a chance to meet him in the past, but while that's not the relevant part, the relevant part is he is the owner of the Family Center Farm and Home that's in Harrisonville, and that is one of the owners of our company, which I'll talk more about in a minute. So a little bit of context for everybody that's sitting here to my right. Like usual, before diving into the proposed project, which we're all here to hear about, I wanted to start by focusing on the who. Who is this developer before you? So I imagine most of you didn't know the name Midstates Distributing until probably 2019. That was when this 64-year-old business came on the scene, when it bought the former Toys R Us distributing facility down on 291 South and breathed new life into it, new life to the tune of tens of millions of dollars to restart that building. Today, Midstates is based in Fort Worth, Texas, and distributes farm, ranch, and home products to more than 700 retail stores, the stores we would go in, right, across 32 states. There are actually 29 owners of Midstates, each multi-generational, family-owned businesses that own and operate these retail stores, again, across the country. Four of the 29 owners have stores in Missouri. And back to Mr. Mills again, Mr. Mills is one of those four owners there in Harrisonville. This map on the screen now shows you the geographic spread of Midstates, of these farm and home stores that they, that they serve and they supply. They've come a long way from their humble beginnings back in 1954, when all of this you see on the screen was just a vision of one couple. And this next major generational investment, which we hope will be here in Lee Summit with the council's support of this proposed public-private partnership, which we'll talk about in a minute, is critical to ensure that Midstates gets to continue to serve the growth of these farm and home stars, stores that you see on the map here and that continue to grow. So the current facility, the former Toys R Us facility that I mentioned a minute ago, it's where this starts. Again, it's on 291 South, as you picture this, just south of Shear, as Shear turns into Thompson Drive on the east side of 291. And it's an approximately 650,000-square-foot distribution facility. It's got just a few specs here, for those that are nerdy about this, 104 dock doors. It's got miles of product conveyor systems to move product around the building, 66,000 pallets, and employees right now, approximately 165 employees. So I thought just for a minute, because we have so many smiling faces behind me, that I would pick one. And I thought maybe Tom, as the CEO, would be the right person to pick, to come up just really briefly to give you not only face, but a voice and, and give you a little bit of a vision for the project. And then I'll come right back and talk to you about the proposed public-private partnership. So Tom, you want to come on up?
Thanks, Kurt.
Yeah, sure.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members. Jeff, Kerry, Rick, Bill, we're all very pleased to be here tonight. And not only tonight, but we've been very happy to join the Lee Summit community since 2018. We look forward to a long foreverness, to use your term, relationship with Lee Summit and continue to expand. Rick leads a team of about 160 people and has done a fantastic job. We're super pleased with the work ethic and the folks we employ over at the distribution center. And as Kurt said, we service 29 retail companies around the country and over 700 stores. And our business is very fortunate. We're blessed to be in an industry that continues to have growth. We serve a rural community and a rural customer across the country. Bill has seven stores in the greater metropolitan area of, or greater area of Missouri. And you can kind of get a flavor for our consumer. And we provide a variety of products and continue to service those members as they continue to grow. And as such, we need to continue to add space to our distribution capability. And we, we look to the future. We love this community. We love being in this part of the country because of where our members are located. You saw the map of all the stores, the efficiencies of the leadership team here, and the workforce, and the access to continued growth of our workforce. So we see this as a very strategic location for our distribution capacity to continue to grow, to serve those members. And we hope you, as you consider our expansion plans, that they fit in with the community. And we look forward to that long relationship with you. So thank you for the consideration and letting us come up and address this. We came up from Texas. I guess it's a night of Texans. But I'll turn it back over to Kurt, and thank you again.
Thank you.
So we put on the screen, you saw in the background, the proposed project is about a half a million square foot expansion of the existing building, just going to the north there. And we're the contract purchasers of what you see highlighted in yellow, which is initial, just over 37 acres for that expansion. There's one other detail that's worth mentioning, although it is a detail. You can see the existing building. Again, you can see the red arrow at the top pointing to where that expansion, half, half a million square foot building would go. You see a middle red arrow on the screen, and you see a red rectangle. That is indicating a piece of city property where, or really a rail spur could go, and that we'd be, as part of this project, we'd be acquiring that from the city. That's a separate proceeding, but it's worth for context if you've heard of that. You see where that is on the screen. That will be underneath, the red area will be underneath the expansion building, should the project move forward. Now, to the proposed public-private partnership that would make this project a reality. Telling you what you already know, there is a ton of local and regional competition to attract businesses like Midstates, a lot. And when I first sat down with Midstates and the executive team to learn more about their needs, they described to me their capital investment for this project, which is approximately $70 million in real and personal property on this site. And I'll just say, there were legitimately pressures from within to explore the idea of moving the facility and the expansion farther west, to be able to get better coverage to distributing to the west. But at the same time, from the very beginning, they said, Kurt, we really like Lee Summit, which again, is why you have all these executives here. They're, they really like Lee Summit. They like the workforce specifically, they mentioned, that they have in Lee Summit. And they want to find a way to stay here in Lee Summit and grow again for, forever. So when we cracked open the project's financials, specifically with Kerry McGuire, the CFO, and went deep, we felt like we found a tool that really could meet their needs, Chapter 100. You've used it. You've heard of it many times. And it proved to be a very good fit as we dug into the financials with the company. And so while the specific terms of the Chapter 100 Midstates felt most financially comfortable with when we started negotiating with staff, was not where we ended up, staff doing their job and us doing the best we could, sharpening our pencil. We did land at a place that we're proposing tonight, where we know that we can be successful. And explaining the Chapter 100 request, I'm going to divide it into two pieces tonight. This request has a real property portion, and it has a personal property portion. So within the real property, which is on the screen right now, you can see that there are two benefits. And none of this is new to you, but for the public and everybody to walk through this, the first is a real property tax abatement. The requested term here for this project would be 10 years, rather than you can remember a number of the industrial building projects we've done have been 20 years over the last five years. This is 10 years. The abatement percentage would be 75% for that 10-year period. And in terms of geographic scope, this Chapter 100 abatement would apply to the entire building, both the existing and the expansion. You pause, kind of soak that in. Why would that be? Well, we need to understand that the proposal says that the existing building valuation would be added as base, along with an inflator. What that means is that the Chapter 100 would not reduce the amount of taxes that the city and the other taxing jurisdictions get today on that existing building. They're like, okay, what's your point? What, what are you doing there? Well, it's extremely important what's going on there. This is something that, again, Kerry, as the CFO, and others, other executives, as they learn more about the valuation history in our county here, because they have some good consultants that talked about that, and I probably don't need to say more if you know what I mean. And this is really a guard against, if you can picture, and try not to spend too much time on it, but I want you to get this point. You have this big building right now that has a large tax bill, but it fits within the pro forma. What if you put a really nice expansion on it? So it's technically one building, and one was to come and say, hmm, let's raise the existing building up, even though it's much, much older, to be more like the new building in evaluation. I look at you all in my eyes, that would be detrimental. When we started digging into that, it's a really big deal. So what do we do? We propose what we're proposing. You put the Chapter 100 over the whole thing. You take that existing tax base in the existing building. You pay that, and you grow it every other year. And you do the 75% abatement on, on the new facility, and just any growth over that base. So you protect the base. That's the story behind that part of the request. That's the first part of real property. The second part is sales tax exemption on construction materials. This is the graphic we try to show every time, so your eyes are accustomed to it, looking at the main points, which are the yellow bars. Sales tax exemption on construction materials on this $70 million project would yield a savings of just, just over $900,000. The city's estimated portion is that 21% at the bottom, which would be $191,000. That's the real property tax side of this. I should say, real property side of this. On the personal property side, the request is a five-year, 50% abatement on personal property. In terms of geographic scope, again, this would apply to the entire building. So let's talk about why would that be? Why would it not just be on the expansion space? The reasoning is because there's $25 million of equipments, personal property, that will be purchased as part of this project. $5 million will go to a sorter that will go in the old building and will immediately help boost capacity throughput. $10 million will go in the new building for racking and material handling and everything you can imagine you have to do in a big new distribution facility. And then this is exciting, $10 million of, I'm probably using the wrong term. This is generally right, robotics, would go into the existing building, making up the full $25 million. So the idea is with all this additional personal property investment, to be able to have the Chapter 100 apply that five-year, 50% abatement, you would need to put it over both buildings. So lastly, moving from the what, that's the what that's before you tonight for feedback, I try to end the presentation with what I call the value proposition, because I know you all are elected by constituents that care about how you spend taxpayer dollars and what public-private partnerships you do, and what the benefit is to them. So with that, I'm going to run through just a few items for you to consider. One is that this is within, this site is within a target, targeted planning area within the city's economic development policy. As a reminder to those that might be listening, this, there's an extensive economic development policy that the city publishes so that everyone can see where the priority areas are for the use of these types of tools like Chapter 100. And again, this property is within that area, specifically the 291 South targeted planning area. The second value proposition item to consider is the significant construction spending. Again, this is a $70 million investment, and Midstates has focused on sort of their pre-construction, pre-development, look at local professionals and for construction at local professionals in both cases, to help boost the local economy and those that live here. The third concept is the idea of job creation. So right now, you heard us both, both Tom and I, both speak to about the 160, 165 existing jobs here that we will retain through this project. But also, Midstates anticipates hiring another approximately 90 jobs across all types of positions, from management to warehouse workers and everything in between. So as you know, job creation has huge positive local impacts. Oftentimes, we've talked about together the multiplier effect. This is a KC-ADC table that you see on the screen, and what it suggests is that in this specific industry, when you put 100 new jobs in place, you'll end up with a certain amount of jobs and a certain, additional jobs and a certain amount of total economic output generated for the area. So if you translate that here, the jobs we'll create will generate approximately, according to these metrics, 42 additional other jobs in the local economy, and have an economic output of about $19 million, beyond the $70 million that we're generating. Also wanted to mention, this is, as a finance guy, this is always the nearest and dearest to my heart, which is, what about specifically for the city, direct dollars to the city? So this is tax- So this is tax stuff. So in short, the use of Chapter 100 to make this substantial project happen here in Lee Summit, as opposed to somewhere else, provides a substantial and direct compelling financial return to the city. Let's start with real property tax. Right now, that expansion, that raw dirt that's north of the existing facility generates $252 a year in real property tax, and then the city's is a portion of that. During the 10-year proposed Chapter 100, 75% abatement, the annual, so the annual taxes would be between $250,000 to $270,000, depending on where you are in the 10-year period. And that's every single year compared to the $252. And to the city, that's about $37,000 to $40,000 a year. After that 10-year period, so the Chapter 100 goes away, after that 10-year period, if you just look at a snapshot of the 10 years after that, there's an estimated $11,850,000 in property taxes that will go to all the taxing jurisdictions, including the city, which if you look at the city's piece of that, as you see, that's just shy of $1.8 million. I also listed, after talking to staff to get estimates, this project will generate excise tax to the city of about $100,000. And also with the new park impact fee, that's approximately another $100,000 to the city. So overall, the point of this focus is that there is definitely a real and significant financial benefit to the city of Lee Summit by supporting this public-private partnership. I thought I'd end, because I figured this will be a question, and I'll anticipate the question, which is, yeah, I kind of like this, but when is this going to happen? So the slide on the screen is a timeline. And the high-level timeline that you're looking at lays out like this. So for the remainder of this year, really, we will really focus on the, hopefully, if we get good feedback tonight, the Chapter 100 approvals, because as you can imagine, this is essential to a project like this. We will also, very soon, be filing for our land use approvals and doing that at the same time. We will then begin, if everything goes well with all that, we'll begin construction in the spring, and it will take about a year of construction to put the expansion facility in place. Meanwhile, also in the spring, I mentioned that first $5 million of equipment that we would spend, that would go into the existing building to immediately boost capacity. And then upon completion of the expansion, again, in mid-2027, we would then move our operations to the expansion area and give us the opportunity to do that $10 million robotics in the existing facility. After all that, I would call that a tremendous success story, another one for the city of Lee Summit, where not only did the city attract, some number of years ago, attract a major national business to Lee Summit into a building that, you know, was a big disappointment, lost a failing retailer. But then the city would have retained this business, supported it as it grows, and make this business, induce this business to make a generational investment in the city with all the benefits we just talked about that then flowed to the city and all its residents. So we're very excited. We're thankful that you gave us the time to present tonight. And if there's any questions now or later, like usual, after Mr. Buschak speaks, then I'd love to address those for you. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
I will begin my presentation with a summary, as I usually do, of the incentive request. And we'll start with what I've called a timeline summary, so you understand this sequentially. To begin with, during the construction period, the request is 100% abatement of the sales and use tax on the construction materials that are used for the construction of the project. Then during the first five years, rolling and three installments, they're requesting personal property tax abatement in the amount of 50% for the new equipment only. The footnote to the one through five years is that there's three installments, as Mr. Peterson mentioned, a $5 million, a $10 million, and then another $10 million purchase. And I think each of those are intended to be staggered by one year. So each one will have its own five-year sequence moving forward, which, in a timeline, that's about years one through seven or one through eight, depending on when those purchases are actually made. And that's on the personal property side for all of the personal property that goes inside the building. And then for years one through 10, that's the real property tax abatement request, real property being the dirt and the buildings, anything that's affixed to the property. As Mr. Peterson explained, the request is 75% of the increment. So I'll talk very briefly about the base and the increment. I know you're familiar with this, because we've talked about this concept in other contexts. Tax increment financing is the most common. The base is simply the value of the property today and the taxes that are produced by the property today. And then the increment is the value added to the property and the taxes that are generated by the additional investment to the property. So base and increment, fairly straightforward. Their request is 75% abatement of the increment, and I also calculated, because I was curious, and I thought you might be too, if you were to look at both parcels, both the existing building and the expansion building, the question might be, what's the percentage of abatement for the entire property, both the existing and the new structure? And the answer is about 44%. If you approve this 75% incremental abatement, that amounts to about 44% abatement of the entire parcel when you factor in the base and the increment, which I thought might be useful for you to know. Then analyzing the property tax benefits to the taxing districts, my numbers here also analyze the entirety of the site. So the 25 taxes are for both parcels. Mr. Peterson pointed out that the taxes on the parcel where the expansion would go is very nominal, it's less than $300. The remainder of the taxes, as I'm showing here, is the tax expected to be generated this year from the existing facility. And then we move into the analysis of what happens if you do approve this. The first-year taxes and pilots are about $919,000, with the city's portion being highlighted in green. And then over the 10-year period for the both parcels, total taxes to be paid is about 9.7, maybe 9.8 million, and the city's portion of that is about 1.4 or 5 million over that 10-year period. I stopped at the 10-year calculation, but I will note that, as Mr. Peterson pointed out, the developer's initial request was a 20-year abatement, and they did not include the personal property tax component. And based on the discussion between staff and the applicant, they've scaled their request down to 10 years for the real property, and then they added five years for the personal property to achieve the targeted results that they are looking for. But through that sequence of discussion, we've shortened by 10 years what the abatement period would be on the real property, based on our discussions. So the value of this incentive request to the developer, the total project cost is about $70 million, all-in, both the property investments, constructing the new building, and then the equipment inside. The value of the sales tax exemption to the applicant would be about $900,000, which is 1.3% of that $70 million number. The net present value, that's what the NPV means, of the real property tax abatement at 7%, factoring in what we presume will be inflation over that period, the value of the real property tax abatement to the applicant is about 5.3 million, which is 7.6% of the total project cost. And then finally, the net present value of the personal property tax abatement is around $1 million. And so the total apples-to-apples comparison, as we typically do, this incentive request, all-in, benefit for the developer is about 10.4% of the $70 million total investment that they plan to make. We've discussed on many occasions what the range that the city council has considered in the past, and the range is typically between 5 and 25%. So this 10% is at the lower end of the range that the city council has approved in the past. Then the impact to the city, I've itemized down here, the sales and use tax exemption, the city's portion of that is about $191,000. The real property tax abatement, the city's portion is typically about 17% of the number up here, so about $908,000. And then the personal property tax abatement, impact to the city is about $191,000. We reached this total, and the city's portion, the impact to the city as a portion of the percentage of comparing to all the other taxing districts, the impact to the city is about 17.8%, which means over 80% of the impact to all the taxing districts would be borne by other taxing jurisdictions and not the city. This is the one-page, simple summary that I like to provide to you, so you have a clean snapshot of what the incentive request is. This is essentially a repeat of what we just looked at, so you have a clean understanding. All of the sources are through Chapter 100. The benefit to the developer is reducing project costs, and the numbers on this chart are the same that I just showed you, tallying up the financial benefit as compared to the total project cost. And then again, you see that percentage benefit to the developer if you are interested in comparing this to other projects that you've approved in the past for incentives. This table, you have seen in the past, and I thought I would include it again for reference. This is a listing of the sample abatement packages for large-scale industrial projects through 24. The original version of this chart that I showed you three or four years ago only included the white items here, and then over time, we've added. So the yellow are what other cities have approved on the Kansas, on the Missouri side of the Kansas City region. And then the green projects are projects that you, the city council, have approved over time, since we started tracking this. And can't quite see this, because we get into a lot of details here, but there are one, two, three, four, five projects that do include personal property tax abatement.
What's the highlighted again? The yellow?
The yellow, the yellow items here, these are other cities that we've added as compared to the original version of this chart that I showed you. So the white is just the version of the chart that I think I showed you first in '22, and then these are other projects that we've learned about or that you have approved since then, and that's what we've added. And you'll see personal property on some of these projects here, personal property. There's one that was approved in Kansas, actually Ramor down here, that's personal property only. So there's a handful of projects that personal property has been included in the abatement package, but for the most part, these are real property tax abatements. And then we get to the summary at the bottom of this table. The average duration of the abatement is about 19 years, typically 20, but some are less. The average abatement during the first 10 years typically exceeds 90% for all these projects. And then the average abatement during the next 10-year period, years 11 through 20, is typically about 50%, with some exceptions being higher for those projects. So the incentive request tonight is a shorter duration than we have seen for industrial projects, and it's substantially less than what we've seen for large-scale industrial projects, both here in Lee Summit and on the Missouri side of the Kansas City region. And then the last table that I included, we can, sorry about that. This is a table that I actually prepared for a previous incentive discussion, but we didn't get to it. This is a listing of all of the projects for which the city council has approved abatement that equals or exceeds 75%. I won't go through all of these. We can talk about these if you'd like, but in case you were wondering, for what projects have we approved an incentive package that's 75% or higher, this is the list. And I noticed, as I was getting ready, there's one that probably should not be on here, that's this one in the middle, this residential project, Vanguard Villas, that's only 50%. I'm not sure why I included it.
The yellow ones are ones that you've added since you've last shown this to us?
No, these are, you, this was included in a previous meeting packet. I don't believe we talked about it, but these are all the same that you have seen previously. And these are all projects that just Lee Summit has.
It's been a while. I haven't seen this in a while. What are those yellow ones?
Yeah, so the yellow, commercial.
Commercial retail, you mean, or similar?
Yeah, commercial retail. The red is residential, and then the, it looks like green on here, kind of blue, green is, are the industrial projects.
I think we've seen a form of this, but I don't remember it being. It's a great summary, so thank you.
Sure. And that concludes my initial comments. I'd be happy to listen to your discussion or answer questions.
Okay. Go back to the, yeah, down there.
Back to the original?
No. That, the forward one.
This one?
Yeah, and then, so we can see it all.
Okay.
So we can see the bottom of it, yeah. Yeah, there we go.
Sorry, keep jumping around.
At least, so that we can see the very bottom.
Okay. I got to learn how to drive this better.
There we go, right there. That's good. Just leave it right there. Okay. All right, we have a few people wanting to comment or question. Councilmember Shields.
Thank you, Mayor. I really like this. I think this is exactly what our incentive tools are for. You know, I've had the privilege of serving on our Lee Summit EDC for the past couple of years now, and these are what we talk about there, too, in terms of business retention and expansion, is what we talk about in our own incentive policy, that this is keeping good jobs here, it's bringing new jobs, it's bringing new investment. The incentive level seems in line with or lower than what a lot of comparable projects have done. You know, we talk about what we need for our school district, that they're always talking about, you know, good family-supporting jobs and increasing tax base. I think this hits those marks. I'm just really happy to see something like this come through, and I appreciate the staff and the business owners working together to find a way to keep this business in Lee Summit. So I think it was explained well. It seemed like your presentation dov told well with theirs. It doesn't sound like there's any real areas of dispute. Do you agree with their multiplier effect analysis? I don't know if you really dig into that, but...
Yes, so we've analyzed that data in the past. It was probably two or three years ago that we started looking at the multiplier data, job data, the upstream jobs, the downstream jobs. Yes, the information that was included in their presentation is something that we have seen before.
Okay. And for any members of the public who aren't super familiar with that, that's basically saying that if you hire someone here, they're going to go out and they're going to shop at our local stores. They're going to support other local businesses, they're going to create other jobs. In those ways, the business is going to be buying supplies from other businesses, that it's not just even when you employ one person, that has a knock-on effect all throughout our economy, kind of a positive reinforcement, right?
Right. That's what I mentioned with the upstream jobs, that are the supplier jobs in and around the region, and then the downstream jobs from where these products go and the businesses, such as Mr. Mills, the family center in Harrisonville, as an example.
And just the actual spending that the employees do when they go out to lunch on their lunch break, they're supporting the, you know, the local restaurant when they go shop it for their groceries, they're supporting the grocery store.
Correct.
Grocery store, who employs people, right?
Yes, those employees presumably shop here in Lee Summit, stay here, lunches, shopping, et cetera, spending their dollars in Lee Summit also has a multiplier effect.
Okay. I don't know that I have any other questions. I'm just excited to see this come through, and I hope it gets positive feedback from my colleagues. Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Potem Lopez.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank the Midstates team. Thank you all for being here tonight, coming in from Texas. Big game yesterday in Dallas, right? But thank you all for being here, and thank you for your investment within Lee Summit and your continued interest in wanting to expand within Lee Summit. I'll try not to repeat what my colleague said, Councilmember Shields, but, you know, when we talk about economic development here in Lee Summit, I guess a lot of the new projects get more attention and a little higher profile. I've said this for a long time, that economic development, a big part of economic development should be retention and expansion. And this is exactly what your project is doing in our community. So again, not to repeat what Councilmember Shields already said, but this has been well presented. Thank you for the thorough analysis and homework you all have done, along with our staff. This is something that I would get behind and be supportive of. I think that, you know, again, just the retention part is important, but the fact that you all want to continue to expand and bring more jobs is something that's very intriguing and a strong interest for us in this community. I do have a question, though. You all are buying additional ground. Is that just to secure future growth opportunities?
Yes, we, the expansion right now, the 500,000 square foot, give or take, proposed is based on a couple of investments that we're making in growth in our business, but the additional acreage would provide for further expansion at some point, you know, when we outgrow the next 500, right?
Hopefully quick. All right, well, thank you. That's all the questions and comments I have, Mayor, but I would be in supportive of this conceptual plan that presented today. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilmember Rader.
Thank you, Mayor. I just have a couple of questions, and my first one is, are the current employees that you have, do you know, are they Lee Summit residents?
The group was debating the exact percentage, but more or less about 30%.
Is Lee Summit residents?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. And I'm guessing others come from just their surrounding cities, or?
Right, just knowing even from projects in the area, right.
Local.
Exactly.
And maybe this is a question for Mr. Buschak, but in these types of, I guess I would say, not as expensive development projects, do we require a feasibility study?
Typically, we haven't.
Okay.
We would require feasibility studies typically when we are seeing a new, a new use that's unique to Lee Summit. I have some examples in mind, probably. I have some examples in mind, probably, I don't want to bring those into this discussion, but something that's, that's unique, that we want to study to make sure there's actually a market for, as a pair, as compared to a project like this, which is, I would say, more straightforward, and the company knows their business, the company knows that they can expand and succeed with this expansion, as opposed to, do we have a question whether this particular use or this facility, is there a market for it? Do we need to study it to see if it's viable? And that's, I don't think that's a question in this case.
Okay, because it's an expansion instead of a, from the ground?
Correct. I mean, that's, that's one reason.
That makes sense.
Also, I think with these industrial projects, and we have talked about, when they're fresh industrial projects, initially, like, actually, this list that's up here is, is probably a good list to use to, to talk about that question, which is, when the first large-scale industrial project came in, one of the issues that we did discuss was, is there a market for it? Because typically, these new spaces, the new industrial spaces are speculative when they're built. The applicant has a good idea that they will be able to fill the spaces, but that is a question for the city council to consider if it's a new, a new facility, as opposed to, in this case, I don't think there's any question, at least at the outset, that the building will clearly be used by the applicant, as opposed to constructing speculative warehouse or industrial space, and then they hope to fill it, but they don't know who they're gonna fill it with.
Sure.
Different situation.
That, that makes sense. And then, let's see, for the applicant, do you expect, when you, on your, on, with your expansion, and Kurt, you may have to ask your guys, but, do you expect with this expansion, then, that there could be more than 90 employees that you would hire? And then, I, I don't know if I saw the chart of what the average income would be, or the average salary that they would be paying, I don't know if they put that in there, and I'm just curious.
Sure, absolutely. No, we talked a lot about employees, and you're always estimating at this stage, you know, if you build it, they will come and you'll-
Sure.
-bring more. So 90 is an estimate, but I definitely think, I think they were being conservative with that, so it definitely could be higher than that. And you even heard Tom mention that with buying more land, hopefully, there's a new day where we're, you know, back for more building. But on the, on the average, I'm gonna remember on this, because we did put this together, when you do management level to warehouse and everything in between, I think we were just over on average, if you let me be, within like $5,000 or something like that, right around $50,000, I think it was something like that. I'm getting nods, yeah.
A little higher.
A little higher, anyway.
$50,000? Okay, great. And then, you mentioned robotics. So, are, is this, is, is that part of what they do, is that-
You're gonna get me in, no, Councilmember Rader, I said, I said robotics, and it's not precise, you're gonna get me in trouble, but-
Okay.
I don't know who wants to, I think Tom, you wanna come, yeah, you wanna come talk about that a little bit? No, it is good, I just, Tom's better.
Just teasing me.
Yeah, robotics. What, what, what we're going to be putting in the existing building, the new investment in equipment, will be what we call a goods-to-person system, and it's, it's about 60,000 bins, and it's an automatic bin retrieval, storage and retrieval system, so we can pick eaches. We're gonna be supporting an apparel and footwear business that we're in the process of acquiring. So when it's in and done, you should come see it, it's gonna be amazing.
I will, and you know, I think it's Lee's Summit West has an amazing robotics-
Oh, let's not forget about-
-department.
High school.
Oh, Lee's Summit High School, okay. Okay, okay, all right. I didn't remember, I toured it, but I thought I was at West, but it's probably at all of our high schools, yeah, amazing, so I can see job opportunities, that's awesome. And then, that was all my questions, but I just wanted to say, as with my, my other colleagues, I am extremely excited about this. And that is one thing that we have talked so much about, is job creation here in Lee's Summit, and so we could, I couldn't be more excited to have you guys, thank you for being here, and thank you for choosing us to continue to expand.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Thanks, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Funk.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm not gonna take up a bunch of time and repeat what my colleague said, but Mr. Peterson and the Midwest team, thank you guys for being here and reinvesting in our community. I, I have one question, I'd be, I'm very supportive of this project, but one question, I think when you first presented, maybe we talked about this before, are we discontinuing that railroad spur down there?
I'll go to a map here first, so we can see what we're talking about. The answer is no, and I'm gonna look back to Mr. Park to make sure he's gonna come up and fill in the gaps, as, after I give my initial answer, which is, their request is to purchase just the red parcel from the city, the city owns this. I think the rail line will still stay in service, and Mr. Park can fill in details.
Yeah, Michael Park, Director of Public Works. So there's actually, we call this South Spur, we also have a North Spur. South Spur has two different branches to it. This particular branch isn't maintained, it hasn't been used in, I don't know how many years or decades. So we would retain this piece in city ownership that you see here in this kind of navy box, just to preserve that opportunity if in the future we wanted to, and I think this is all being worked out in agreements, to potentially reclaim that for future spur extension and use and supported development. But as proposed, with, with a potential sale of this city ownership of part of the spur, allows the development to happen, it would really negate any use of that particular branch of South Spur. The, the remainder, once you get across Thompson, is being used by a different business as really railcar storage at this point, so we have an arrangement with them that they maintain that piece of that branch, and they do actively use the other branch that runs north-south adjacent to that business.
Thank you, Michael. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Carlisle.
Thank you, Mayor, and I thought I was gonna get through this without having to say anything, because Donnie almost got my question, I'm sorry, Councilmember Funk almost got my question, but just to follow up on that, so them acquiring this land, the building is gonna go across that, correct? So truly, that completely negates us ever being able to use that piece again, correct? I'm sorry, hypotheticals are horrible.
For so long as there's a building structure over that, yes, it negates the use of it, but who knows what the future holds, whether or not, you know, there could be pass-through, other building configurations, partial tear-down, reconstruction, or other redevelopment opportunities.
Okay, and then, maybe this one for the developer. With having a rail spur there, does that in any way help or hurt?
Not, not for us, well, sorry, let me start over. It doesn't, it doesn't help just the way that our business is. It hurt in the sense that we looked at every which way to, you imagine, it's just pretty pictures, and it's easy, right? This is how the expansion needed to go, and it happens to be across the, the red box on the screen. So in that sense, if it stayed there, it hurts, because we couldn't do this project. But for us, rail was, is, is not helpful to, to-
But you move everything by truck, then, basically?
Yeah.
Yeah, not by rail?
Yeah.
Okay, great, thank you. Oh, and then, I guess I would go ahead and, I will echo everybody else's comments, I do like this project, this was a great presentation from staff and the developers, so thank you for that, and that's all I have, thank you.
All right, thank you. Okay. All right, yes, Councilmember Prer.
Thank you, Mayor, I just wanted to say I'm in support of it, and the Family Center is my favorite place to buy chickens, also. But you guys run out so quick, you have to get there like day one, or you can't get the good chickens. So I think you guys should, like, sell backdoor chickens out of this facility.
All right, thank you. Okay, I'll just make a couple of comments, a few comments here. $70 million investment is, you know, really great for our community. The job creation, you know, it, it, just the fact that we have an opportunity to hire more people in the community, but also, we've always wanted to bring people to our community for jobs, instead of everybody leaving. So we try to off, we, we really worked hard to offset, you know, the number of, of people in our community that are leaving for jobs. We want people to come to our community. We, I, I always talk about it, it's like a day trip, you know, come into our community to work, and, and that's how that multiplier effect really kind of kicks in, as well as those supplier jobs, so, so those are positives. The, the fact that the incentive request is, you know, when you look at our comparator cities, Mr. Buschak does such a great job on these charts. Mr. Buschak, you really do, but, you know, I don't know if, I don't know, maybe it's just because we look at the charts, we know what they mean, but the consistency really helps us zone in or zoom in on the numbers, the percentages, not just the, the percentage for the 10 years, but the percentage based on, compared to the overall investment, as well as, I thought it was interesting, you kind of threw a little twist in there, I don't know that you've done this a lot, where you did the base plus increment, you know, we'll have to talk about that more later. But all this stuff, all this really helps, you know, to justify what is, you know, we're in the game of bringing jobs here, just from our perspective, from the cities, and this tells us we're in the game. There was a time when we wouldn't get this request, you know, many years ago, and I think we've sent the message that we want to keep our businesses, we want to retain, so thank you for, again, like others have said, thank you for giving us, giving us an opportunity to, I say, keep our talent. And then, Mr. Buschak and team over here, staff, thank you for putting together and working with them to come up with numbers that are, that are, that are digestible, and also that we can, that we can support, that are reasonable for us, so that the return on, on investment makes sense. So with that said, I believe you've had a lot of thumbs up up here, a lot of, a lot of, so as a conceptual, we, you know, recommend you formalize this, Mr. Peterson.
Thank you, Mayor.
Yep. And then, Mr., do you have, do you, anything else before we close it up?
No, thank you.
All right, thank you. Thanks for investing in Lee's Summit. I'm gonna take a-
For foreverness.
Yeah, for foreverness. I'm going to take a recess, so that, we, we still have a few things to get through tonight, so the council needs to stay fresh, I'm gonna take a 10-minute recess, so we'll be back in 10.
Ever wondered how the city budget works? The total 2026 budget is over $380 million, which includes funding for daily operations, capital improvements, debt service, internal service, and enterprise operations. For example, the general fund is the foundation for the city's day-to-day services and investments like road maintenance, public safety, and fire protection. The general fund is supported by property taxes, sales taxes generated by local businesses, franchise taxes, and other sources like licenses, permits, and fees. For every dollar citizens pay in property tax, the city receives 18 cents. This means the city receives $845 a year in property taxes for a median single-family house. These taxes provide public safety, park maintenance, infrastructure, and the best services to keep Lee's Summit going and improving. One of the community's top priorities is infrastructure investment, which is reflected in the capital improvement plan. $113 million of the 2026 budget is invested into the capital improvement plan. The 2026 capital improvement budget includes investments like the 291 and 50 highway interchange, Third Street, Warden-Purcell's intersection, and Prior Road. The budget process includes guidance from the city council, citizen input, and critical success factors from the city's Ignite strategic plan. To learn more about the city's budget, visit cityofls.net/budget.
When the person called on the phone, she said that, that there was a dinosaur walking down her road. Of course, we had to go out and check that out. We get out there, and it was a big African tortoise, probably 60 pounds, walking down the road. When they walked, they really stand up tall, so I could see why she thought it was a dinosaur. I'm Rodney Wagner, I'm the manager of Lee's Summit Animal Control. So as you can see, we get all sorts of animals here, you guys have some guinea pigs off to the side. All the windows up here are animals that are adoptable right now. Every one of these dogs is ready to go and ready for adoption. And the same thing with our cats over here. A lot of cool cats in here now, so. So this is our three-acre lot we have out back, and this is where we do all the walk-in dogs, exercise. We also have a side yard off to the side over there, so we can let them run loose, they can run together, and then we have what's called play groups, kind of like having a bunch of kids. Here's our, our vet room. We have a vet that comes out twice a week. This is our Sally Port where we bring the animals into. This is one of our animal control trucks, and we can hold up to six animals, we have a lift on the other side to put big animals in. We actually have temperature gauges in here and in the truck to tell us how hot it is. Once it gets to a certain temperature, we bring all the animals back here immediately, so. This actually has traps in it, but we do a lot of wildlife trapping, I mean, a lot, so. Bats, pot-bellied pigs, horses, cows, emus, a lot of reptiles. We had a citizen one time that had over 200 reptiles in his basement. Caymans and alligators in here that are four or five feet long, you can't keep those, and people do, and they're surprised when they can't keep them. I'm like, really, you're surprised you can't have an alligator in here? Our main goal here is public safety and also the safety of the animals, and we have very dedicated people back there, and they definitely stay here for the love of the animals, which also includes getting them adopted out. We'll have about 4,000 impounded animals a year, probably about close to 2,000 are dogs and cats. The cats and dogs, when they get impounded here, they go on a five-day hold, and then, after the five days, if the owner doesn't show up, then we can put them up for adoption. Adopt a animal here is actually really simple. You just come in, look what forever animal you're looking for, find the right pick, you have, you go to the adoption room up there and see if you get along with them, you spend as much time as you want to in there. From that point on, it's just a matter of making sure they're spay or neutered, and all their vaccinations up to par, and they're good to go. We have a very high adoption rate, because we try everything our power to get animals adopted out. We have Heart of America, a humanist society that, we do a lot of adoptions through, and then we also have other groups. We have some people that literally will just look all over the country for somewhere for a dog to go, and we've sent dogs up into South Dakota, North Dakota, Washington State. So it's actually, it's a huge united effort to get all these animals home.
Tarzan's got lots of energy. Hazel's got a weird meow. Bellbell, she wants nothing to do with the other cats, she'll kind of get her grumpy face going.
And the good thing about the people here is that they get all their friends to get animals, too. All of us have probably the limit of all the animals that we can have at home, you know, they are huge animal lovers. If it was up to the people here, we'd have 15 cats running around in here. We had a citizen one time out there, and he was bathing his two nine-foot-long boa constrictors in the front yard. Apparently, I was, I was gardening some, some attention, and so we went out there and had to talk about that. Why do I do this job? Ah, dude, I love this job. I grew up on a farm, and taking care of that many animals, you can't help but like animals. This is just like fancy farming. You know, you're just bringing the animals in here, taking care of them, and, and finding them homes, and, yeah, absolutely animal lover.
I love working here.
I feel very blessed.
I love it here. I look forward to coming to work every day, being a part of this team.
Like a family away from home.
Where everyone feels like everybody knows their name.
The city that supports you. We see that with our benefits.
A pension, vacation days, job security.
Being able to be heard.
We feel valued, we feel respected.
Lee's Summit is a very progressive city.
It's growing, it's thriving.
We have this drive towards not just doing a job, but doing it with a spirit of excellence.
I had the opportunity to continue to grow, regardless of 30-plus years doing this kind of work.
It's more than just dollars and cents.
We're here really to give back.
Providing a service to better a community.
To go out and serve people.
To be a part of something bigger than yourself.
If I would have known what I know now, years ago, I would have been here much sooner.
Traditionally, we think as police officers, those responding to law enforcement needs within the community. But honestly, we are there to serve our citizens, and our citizens do go into crisis, they do have mental health crises, and we're being called to those scenes on a regular basis. In order to help serve those citizens better, we did initiate the Crisis Intervention Team Program. These are officers that are specially trained to de-escalate crisis situations. Recently, we've brought co-responders onto the scene, licensed, qualified, mental health professionals housed within our police department, and they respond with those officers directly to those scenes where a crisis is occurring, so they can interact with that citizen and get them the help they need right there on that scene.
The co-responders are either a bachelor or master level in a behavioral health-related field. They wear plainclothes, they don't carry weapons or anything like that.
I have a police radio that I listen to all day, listen for, you know, those key words.
I have a police radio that I listen to all day, listen for, you know, those key words, mental health, behavioral health, crisis.
There's a lot of officers that just call for me. I have my own radio number.
I also have the ability to self-dispatch to them on, say, 982, then route.
Officers en route, 914.
So typically, I arrive after they've made it safe. I'll make contact and get kind of the rundown, and then I just kind of jump right in.
Like, hey, you know, my name's Allison. I'm a mental health professional. I'm here to help you. I'm not here to take you to jail or arrest you.
Sometimes all a person needs is a voice, someone neutral, someone outside that, you know, can listen. I do a lot of safety planning, including family, their support network. Who's close to you? Can some, if they're home alone, who can come over and hang out with you today? Can we lock away your sharps? Can we put up your meds? Do you need meds? Can we get you over to the urgent care to get you assessed for your medications? Some of them also are like, oh, I'm so glad you came. This made me feel so much better.
Our main goal as co-responders is to, one, get people connected to the services that they need and also divert from emergency rooms and jails.
And they almost get a different view of the police responding. That lets me know you care and the officers care.
Lee Summit Police, can we help you?
My husband has.
In 2020, we had 722 mental health-related calls for service. 2022, by that time, 1,479. These mental health-related calls for service are increasing. How we're responding to that is increasing the number of crisis intervention team officers we have available, as well as the number of co-responders we have available to respond on these calls.
So what I think is important for the community to know about the co-responder program is that we're here, we exist. All you have to do when you call 911 is ask for us. You know, say, hey, I want a co-responder to respond to this crisis, and we'll go. I was really struggling about eight years ago. My personal journey with mental health, and I met some amazing social workers and amazing programs that have helped me get to where I am today. I really couldn't see myself doing anything else. We want to help, and that's what we love to do.
So at a client, we got a call, showed some suicidal ideations, and she really felt that she had nobody. And, you know, and getting to know her story, getting to know who comes around and sees you. Well, then we found a support person, and they responded immediately, and we made a plan. I called back and checked on her in an hour, and then I checked on her in two hours. We were able to get her into the additional services to where she talks to someone every week or more. I just took a person that really just thought they had nobody, and nobody would show up for them and show them you do, and you'll be amazed who is in your corner if you just simply say, I need a little help.
You can make the difference in somebody's life.
If you're trying to get in the fire and EMS service, Lee Summit is probably the top name.
On a daily basis, we are tasked with an incredible task. So we're trying to keep it a relaxed environment.
As a new person, you are constantly on edge, learning.
Morning will look typical, coming in, getting a report from the shift that's going off, get our truck checks done.
Our citizens trust us and believe in us by providing amenities like our gear, our stations.
They build it to accommodate getting to a call, but also having a home. State-of-the-art weight equipment.
Individual bunk rooms.
Downtime areas.
Breakfast and dinners together.
Cook together. Get to know one another. Train together. Like a brother knows a brother, and a sister knows a brother. Banter back and forth, but when the tones go off, they go to work.
We're here for 48 hours, so it can happen at any time.
You can be in the gym, you can be in the middle of the night, you can be cooking. Stop what you're doing and listen. Wherever we are in the station, people will stop what they're doing and listen, finding out which station it is. What is the nature of the call? What apparatus? Where are we going? Can be on the highway, northbound, southbound, westbound. Expectation, other lives involved.
That adrenaline dump.
adrenaline rush. Pants on, coats on, getting in the truck, we're mentally focused, geared up, paying attention to where we're going. Then we have a game plan that happens in the truck. The officer can give directions, and the dispatcher will update you. The officer will listen, the driver will listen. We get all in the same page, and when we get to the call, we can go to work. So many degrees of severity, structure fire, swift water rescue.
EMS.
Car accident.
Technical rescue.
Tactic medic team. Equipment the fire department offers us is top-notch, from ring cutter to extrication equipment, state-of-the-art stuff, great trucks.
Tablet, Lucas device, battery-powered pot.
The right tools, the right training. The learning does not stop in the academy.
Building blocks can.
We're going to bring this meeting back to order. We made it through quite a bit of our agenda. We still have ways to go, though. We have a presentation, and then we have a lot of ordinances to read. So we're going to be on Agenda Item 5B. This is a presentation and consideration regarding municipal judge compensation and court operations. So it looks like we've got Mr. Dunning, Mark Dunning, City Manager, the Honorable Judge Alteri, and the Honorable Judge Maxwell Lopez here to present. So, Mr. Dunning, you want to start us off?
I sure will. Thank you, Mayor.
Oh, wait, I'm sorry. Let me get Mayor Potem Lopez out of here first. You want to say?
Mayor, I will recuse myself for this presentation.
All right. Thank you, sir. All right, yeah, now, Mr. Dunning.
Yep, thank you, Mayor. Mark Dunning, City Manager. I will share some brief introductory remarks for this consideration and presentation, and I'll turn it over to our honorable municipal judges to bring forward the request. So I'll be briefing this, but to provide some background and context to this agenda topic, I would note that this consideration has been to Finance and Budget Committee on two occasions, once on July 6th and once on July, or August 18th of this year. And I would note in both instances, Mayor Potem Lopez, he's a member of the Finance and Budget Committee, and he recused himself during those committee considerations as well. And at the August 18th meeting, that was the last meeting this was considered, we had two members present, so we didn't have a quorum of the committee at the time. So no direction could really be given at that time since we didn't have a quorum, but information was presented, and the two members suggested through consensus that this matter be brought forward to the full council for consideration. So that's what brings this here this evening. So some background, the municipal court judges are seeking to make some operational changes at the municipal court, and as such, then, that kind of lends itself to a discussion around municipal court judge compensation. And in order to determine how that might occur, there's quite a few legalities that need to be considered in that. So my role in this process is to help facilitate decision-making and make sure we're making informed decisions. With the municipal court judges here in Lee Summit, they're elected. That's the way our charter frames how to become a municipal court judge. So they're elected positions. They're not appointed positions. They're not city employees. They're elected to office. And so they're not under the supervision of the city manager in the executive branch, nor are they really under the purview of the mayor and the council. The legislative branch, they're our judicial branch, and so they're that third branch of government here in Lee Summit. And so the judges, they oversee the municipal court operations. That's their role. We, as the executive branch, don't dictate what that is, nor do you use the legislative branch. So they have control and guidance and direction over the municipal court functions. So this is a prime example of the three branches of government working together to figure out what should we do in this space. So I want to pull up a document here because I've referenced this at Finance and Budget, but I wanted to, just as I go through it, I wanted to show you what were, what are some of those legal considerations? And I'm going to start with our charter language. This is in the Lee Summit, Lee Summit, Missouri Charter, and we take guidance from this. And it talks about compensation of municipal judges to be determined by ordinance. So that tells us that the mayor and the council, by an ordinance, determine the compensation of the judges. That's why it's before you this evening. Shall not be dependent in any way on the number of cases tried, the number of guilty verdicts reached, or the amount of fines imposed or collected. So that's made clear. And then, no change in compensation of an incumbent municipal judge shall become effective during that judge's term of office. You all, as elected officials, know that because, as council members, you have that same provision when we look at the mayor provisions in the charter and the council positions within the charter. So that's some framework about when we consider compensation for municipal judges that we need to keep in mind. In addition to the charter language, then, I'm going to scroll up here. We deal with some language out of the Missouri Constitution, a couple articles. Here's one on compensation for municipal officers. The compensation of state, county, and municipal officers shall not be increased during the term of office, nor shall the term of any officer be extended. So that's another provision that we need to be mindful of as we consider this. Article 5, Section 23, more specific to municipal judges and court personnel. This is basically saying that the tenure and compensation of judges, in our case, since we have a charter form of government, shall be provided by law. Well, in our case, our charter provides us that guidance as to how to go about compensation for municipal court judges. And then lastly, revised statutes of Missouri, another provision in here, and this is where our charter takes guidance from as well, to be, you know, aligned with the statutes of Missouri. The compensation should not be dependent on the number of cases tried, guilty verdicts, or the amount of fines imposed or collected. So it's kind of a compilation of the Missouri Constitution, revised statutes of the state of Missouri, and our charter that gives some legal guidance as to, you know, what may be considered as we consider compensation for municipal court judges. So I'll bring that down a little bit and kind of wrap up here. So that's that legal framework. We've also had outside legal counsel provide us guidance on this because there is case law about this, too. And what that case law tells us is that there are exceptions to those parameters, if you will. And I want to, let me find my notes here. There's some explicit language in that opinion that I wanted to share with you. Let me find it real quick. There we go. And it says, although this language exists within the constitution, the statutes, and the city charter, courts, as established through case law, have found that this prohibition of midterm compensation increases is not absolute. There are limited exceptions, one of which exists when additional duties, extrinsic or not germane to the office, have been imposed in conjunction with the increase in compensation. So at our Finance and Budget Committee, there's been discussion about, okay, what is considered additional duties that have been imposed? And a couple topics come to mind. In January of 2024, we adopted an ordinance that provided some clearer guidelines as to the roles and responsibilities of the supervision and personnel management of the court. As I mentioned, when we get into municipal court operations, that's the judges overseeing that. The city does not play a role in that space. But when it comes to support of those positions, the court administrator, court clerks, and the like, we support them in the sense that we do, we help them with their annual budget, with human resources needs, those types of things. And so it's a shared responsibility. And in January of 2024, we adopted an ordinance that made that clear, and that did impose duties upon the judges in which they oversee the court personnel. And it just clarified that. So that's one aspect that one could say, well, these are additional duties that have been imposed. Another that's been discussed is taking on additional dockets. And I won't speak to this, I'll let our honorable judges talk to this, but there's this, currently, Lee Summit does not provide for a recognized mental health court docket or a drug court docket. There are certain things that they would know way better than I what it would take to do those, but those are two things that would be considered here in Lee Summit. And those would be additional on top of what already functions over there in municipal court. So those were two that our legal counsel said these would fit that exception and could be considered additional duties that could result in an increase in compensation for our judges. So with that, I think I'll turn it over to the judges to go through their presentation, make their request. I do, I would share with you all that, and maybe it'd be helpful to pull this up just to help you understand what we're currently, judge compensation that currently exists. So their compensation right now is shown right here because that was done on April 4th, 2016. So that's the current compensation for the judges. In January of 2024, basically a week before we did the roles and responsibilities ordinance, you all adopted an ordinance increasing the judge compensation to be $51,000 annually, plus their allowances. So, but that does not take effect until May 1st of 2026. And then mayor and council also increase compensation for those positions as well. One difference between the mayor and the council and the municipal court judges, the judges do receive benefits, not all benefits, but these benefits listed here, they do not, they are currently not in our retirement system, our loggers' retirement system. So I wanted to paint that framework of, you know, what is set up right now with regard to compensation with our municipal court judges. And so with that, I will tee up the presentation, and I'll turn it over to our judges. And certainly be here for questions and additional dialogue.
Good evening, Mayor Baird and City Council members. We really appreciate this opportunity to come speak with you tonight. I think most of you, I think all of you are aware at this time of some of the challenges that we are facing currently in the court and during the last few years due to the increase in our population, the city of Lee Summit. We hope that after tonight, you will have some more clarity as to the issues we're facing, and we can work together to jointly find a resolution and ultimately use the best practices to make this more efficiently run in court and a better environment for our citizens. So generally, when you hear the term "public safety," we think of fire and police. We don't normally think of anything other than the fireplace when you think about public safety. But the court is an integral part of public safety in our community and making sure it's a safe community for all of our citizens. We have a direct impact on those that are the victims of people that commit crimes. And a lot of the victims are Lee Summit. And a lot of the victims are Lee's Summit residents. And we have a direct impact on those that commit those crimes. We play a critical role in ensuring that public safety for all is, is the standard in Lee's Summit. Just as the city is, is providing resources for police and fire so that they can maintain their part of the public safety triangle, we also need the city council to help partner with us so that we can also do our part to make sure we have the tools and resources to promote public safety. A lot of you have probably never been to the municipal court, so you don't understand the, or you may not be aware of the kind of cases that we preside over. We preside over a lot of criminal cases involving dangerous activities. Some of those activities are domestic assault. Those include strangulation, choking, and people putting bags on other people's head and trying to suffocate them. We've got people illegally discharging firearms in the city of Lee's Summit. We have people that are engaging in high-speed chases throughout the streets of Lee's Summit, trying to avoid our police officers. We have threats to shoot up our schools. We have assaults on our law enforcement officers as well as other citizens. And we have felony-level shopliftings that we're seeing with people coming in and stealing in our, in our retail shopping centers. Many of these cases involve people with serious mental illness. These type of cases that we preside over are clear examples about how the court is providing a critical role in ensuring public safety for our citizens. In addition, we have a lot of obligations outside of court. These keep us busy on, on court dates, and this directly relate to our duty to ensure public safety. We are each on call 24/7 per month, which means at any time, could be 3:00 in the morning, we could be fielding a call from a police officer, someone in the jail, or someone asking us to, to issue a warrant, issue a bond. Sometimes our jails get too crowded and we have to decide an alternative to incarceration when the jails are too full and we've exceeded the amount of jail space. We also, on the weekends, we're issuing warrants and bonds. We don't have staff in the office, so we are the ones at home reading probable cause statements, typing up warrants, sending them back to the police station. We have duties imposed to us by legislation which requires us to arraign prisoners within a certain amount of time. So we do that on the weekends also. We're in constant contact with the jail, the prosecutors, and all that over the weekends. We also have many meetings with our community partners and the police department where we need to meet with our mental health and drug resource provider to make sure the court system is functioning adequately and we're able to provide mental health services for those that need it. All of these extra duties require us to work outside of our normal court days. And I don't know if y'all are aware, we have two court days a week in Lee's Summit. I do one and Judge Al Terry does the other. And that's all we have. These, these additional duties require us to spend countless hours outside of the court, hours that we need to put in to make sure that we are doing the best for our citizens. And we have no time to do these because when we're in the courthouse, we are actually at court. Our current court structure is outdated. Lee's Summit has changed a lot in, in the last 44 years. We have more jobs, more industry. We have more investments in the cities. Our population is skyrocketing. We have all these new amenities and it's drawing additional people to move to the city. And that's great for our population. But the reality is, that's also putting a strain on our court system. We have been in this current court date of two, current two-day-a-week system since 1981. So 1981, that's when we went to having two judges having court two days a week, one day each. And we've had no significant orginal changes, organizational changes in the court for 44 years. So our judiciary has not kept up with the growth of the city, or the additional duties imposed on the judges by the increase in the population, the increase in the number of tickets being written, the increase in crime, and increase in supervisory duties that the Supreme Court has imposed on us to supervise the court staff, and the duties imposed on us by changes in the state law. We are not in alignment with comparison cities providing municipal court services. We are being spread way too thin. I know you all are aware that Lee's Summit is one of the fastest-growing cities in the state, and that's why we all live here. It's a great city. Back in 1981, when the population was around 28,000, is when we went to a two-judge system. I didn't have the exact numbers for 1981, but from 1980 to 85, somewhere when we went to a two-day-a-week system, we were around 28,000 to 33,000 people. We're now at 107,000. In '24, we are projected to be at 140,000 people. In that same timeframe, the police department, seeing the need imposed on them by all the additional people in the city, they have adapted. They have adapted to the increase in the population by providing more officers. If you look, again, I didn't know, I couldn't get the exact number for 1981, but right around 1985, they had 60 police officers working for the city of Lee's Summit. This, right now, in 2025, they have 173 officers and 81 civilians. They have quadrupled their police force in the same amount of time since we've been having a two-days-a-week system. Likewise, the fire department, they adopted, they adapted to the need in our city caused by increased population to, from 54 firefighters to now they have 172 firefighters and 26 support staffs. They have almost 200 employees, and they have also quadrupled the number of staff members. Meanwhile, we are still limping along at two court dates per week with the two-judge system that we have. We've had that same system in place for 44 years. And our court system is under stress by only having two court dates per week. As a result, we are inefficient, we are not serving our citizens, our community partners, and our employees. We have overcrowding, excessive wait times, and safety concerns. This is a picture that was taken by our bailiff in our, in my courtroom recently. As you can see, the docket sizes are so large that we have people standing along the walls. We have somebody that has pulled up a chair to sit down. We have people standing along the walls in the back. We have attorneys sitting behind, or standing behind the prosecutors waiting to be seen. And then this is the other side of the courtroom that same day. As you'll see in the far right by the exit sign, we have police officers there ready to testify at trials. They, they don't have anywhere to sit. We have people lining up all along the walls. We have people standing everywhere. And what you don't see is the number of people outside that can't even be let in because we don't even have any room. It's, it was standing room only and then some. So what are our neighboring cities doing? So in preparation for this, we thought, we'll do a little research and see where we fall with what our neighboring communities are doing. Now, we could have gone outside nationwide, done searches on other courts. We chose to focus on what people in this, in our immediate area are doing. And some of the local cities, we're the sixth-largest city in the state, so a lot of the cities in Missouri, for comparison, were too small. And again, we didn't go to St. Louis. So these are just cities in the surrounding area and what they're doing. So when we started looking, comparison cities are holding courts in excess of seven days a week, running two courts simultaneously. Even smaller municipalities than us are holding court at least four days per week. So if you look at Olathe, for example, Olathe has 141,000 people. They have two judges, have two courtrooms, so they have court five days a week per judge. So they are holding court 10 times per week. Lee's Summit, as you'll note down there, we are having two. I know Kansas City, Kansas, it doesn't look like the numbers look, should be right because five times two is not 14. Kansas City, Kansas also has pro temp judges that do additional dockets, so that's why that number's 14. But if you look on here, even cities much smaller than us have four and five court dates per week. If you look at Independence, which is our neighbor up here, they have two judges doing court two days a week, so they have court four days a week. So the average of these comparable cities are 7.3. Now, in your packet, I also provided you all with an Excel spreadsheet. I don't have it up here because for purposes of presentation, we're just focusing on comparison cities. We have a lot of other cities bigger than us and smaller than us, but we were just trying to focus more on comparable cities and comparable sizes. So if you look at this, the comparable average is about 119,000. Most places have same amount of judges, two, one or two judges having court at least four days per week, 4.6 days per week per judge, or 7.3 court days per week. So Lee's Summit is needing more court dates. Given our growth rate and the level of excellence that we are expecting for our community, we determine that we need six days of court per week with the two-judge system like our neighboring cities. Even at six days per week, we're still going to be well below the comparable averages. And honestly, this is just a band-aid. We, we don't have two courtrooms, so we can't do any more than that. Our growth rate is going to be at 143,000 in about 14 years. And every single, 100% of the cities, 140,000 or greater have at least two full-time judges running court five days a week in two courtrooms, at least 10 court days per week. So even at this, we're just going to, this is just a band-aid. It's going to have to be addressed later. I know I probably won't be around in 15 years and probably you guys won't either, but it's going to have to be addressed at some point by another city council or somebody's going to have to figure out how to, how to get us in line with the other communities. So the other thing we did is we figured, okay, we know we're really behind on what the comparable averages are for the amount of court days per week. So we looked at what are other cities investing in their courts and in their judges, for their judges to be able to run the system, whether it's two days a week, four days a week, whatever it is. What are comparison cities paying their judges? And in turn, what are they paying, what is the city, the total cost of the city for their judges per year? So if you look again at Olathe, their judges make $164,838. So between those two judges, they're spending $329,676. Now, that doesn't include any pro temp judges or part-time judges that have to come in if somebody's on vacation or fill in or do additional dockets like the ones in Kansas City, Kansas. That also doesn't include any retirement or any other type of benefits that they're offered. It doesn't include cost of living adjustment. If you'll notice on here, 100% of the comparison cities are paying their judges retirement, everybody but Lee's Summit. So none of that is taken consideration, just purely salary is what we're looking at here. So if you look on here, if you look at the numbers, you'll see Lee's Summit falls gravely behind in what cities are willing to pay or what other cities are paying to maintain their court system and to pay their judges to, for them to come in and have more court dates per week. So Lee's Summit is only, at this point, providing $76,650. Now, the number that, that Mr. Dunning showed also include, this is just salary, and like I said, these don't include anything else. Part of the additional salary that he showed you, which was 41, includes phone allowances and car allowances. So again, on all of these salaries, we didn't include all of those extra things that the other judges got. We just included salary itself, no other benefits. So that's, that's where Lee's Summit is falling. Now, as he mentioned, on May 1st of 2026, that is going to go up to $51,000 per judge. So that total that the city will be investing, the city of Lee's Summit will be investing right now at 76, will be $102,000 for salaries for both judges. Still no retirement and still one court date per week, so still two days per week total instead of the, the 7.3. So that's not going to help us get anywhere near that 7.3 average that the other court dates are doing. But even so, even at 102, we're still way, way below every other city bigger and smaller than us. And we're also way below what the comparable averages for the other cities. Over the last 44 years, other cities have increased their court operations budgets to meet the demands of the cities, the growth in the population, the growth in the tickets being written, and the growth in the crime that is, is happening in those cities. They've increased the court days to support their operations and meet the demands required of their judges. They've increased the compensation of their judges so that they can be in court more often and have more court dates to, to handle the increased workload. They've made cost of living and CPI adjustments, along with increases to meet operational demands. They've provided retirement and other benefits. Lee's Summit has increased the number of court administrative staff and has increased their compensation to make them stay competitive in the market. But the compensation to the judges has lagged despite the far greater demands of, imposed on us, including the, again, the increase in the population that we serve, the increased supervisory duties by the Supreme Court, such as supervision and hiring of court staff. It's really hard to supervise somebody when you're only there one day a week, and increased duties imposed on the courts by changes in state laws. Since 2008 to 2025, the compensation of the judges has only increased $1,825, not including the compensation that will happen in May. $1,825 is the salary difference between a judge in 2008 and 2025. Meanwhile, our comparison cities have invested more than twice as much as us to support the judicial and municipal court systems. During that same timeframe, there have been very few inflationary increases in our budget for judicial compensation, and they have not kept up with increased demands of the court system. The cities that, we're requesting that the city align us with comparison cities and invest in our judicial operations, including additional court days, giving us market-rate compensation, market-rate retirement benefits, and annual cost of living adjustments. What we're proposing is that the amount of court dates are increased to six, three court dates per judge, increase the judicial compensation to the comparison average of $2,111,211,004, which is the market average, and give us market-rate retirement benefits. If you look at the screen, you will see that even at that, we're still going to be lagging behind the total court dates per week of other comparison cities. So actual, the actual additional investment by the city is going to be only $109,044. What that is, is the cost of investment we're requesting is $211,044. As of May 1st, 2026, the salary that the city will be paying for the judicial, for to support their court system is $102,000. So the difference we're asking for is that $109,044 in retirement. The return on investment to the city is that the number of court dates per week will be increased to six. We will be able to reduce overtime paid to police, court staff, and the prosecutor's staff when we don't have to stay after on court dates. And when the officers don't have to wait hours and hours to testify at trials because we can't get to them because of the number of, the size of the docket. The dockets will be more manageable, will be able to provide better services to our citizens. It's very frustrating to them when they have to wait for hours to be seen. It will allow us appropriate time to supervise and manage our court staff and collaborate with community partners. It will give us time to do bond forfeitures, which will bring additional revenue to the city. And we can get specialty dockets dedicated to alleviate the overload and allow us more time in the courtroom. And here's a list of some of the, the dockets we would like to have, dedicated dockets. Thank you so much for your time and your consideration here today. As an integral part of the public safety partnership with police and fire, we trust that you all will partner with us as you have with fire and police through the years and give us the tools necessary, necessary to expand our court system and to ensure we are able to adequately provide for the safety and the welfare of our citizens. I'm going to let. Thank you. I'm going to let Judge Al Terry give some follow-up and then we'll take some questions.
Thank you.
And my follow-up is a little more random and it's not going to pertain to the slides. I, the picture of the crowded courtroom that Judge Lopez showed about one of her days, instead of it just being congested and busy, sometimes there are additional considerations that people don't think about. There are people in that courtroom that should not be mixing. You've, you could have someone who's been hit by someone else, and they've got angry family members here, they've got angry family members, and we're having them all hang out and sit together for an hour or two hours. And we have one court bailiff, so you can't even get into the courtroom because it's too congested. So not only are we overloaded in the courtroom at times, and it doesn't provide, it's not the best practice to have a courtroom like that. And it's also not the best practice to have people outside the courtroom where we actually don't have any kind of court bailiff at all, where those people are mixing and they shouldn't be around one another. So that, that's something that, like her courtroom. And then something I, I do, which is very unsavory, but I don't have much of a choice, I will do cattle calls during my dockets. Like today, I, I will go through and pick out similar tickets and then call all those people up and have, okay, so you all have this. And it's so embarrassing to do that, but if I don't do that, there, I'm going to go underwater fast if I don't get. fast if I don't get moving. People are gonna get angry because they have family obligations, work obligations, and they had a set time for their court and they expected it to happen at that time. So unfortunately, I will call them up and then just try to do the same thing. You know, here's what is gonna happen for all of you. And that's just not a good practice. In addition, and when I don't do that, sometimes I'll say, okay, here's who I have, I'll go through my next few cases and say, here is who's up, here's who's on deck, who's here is in the hole, so please gather your belongings, so when I call your name, you can get on up here. That's just rush, rush, rush. And they're there, and you know, we all know how it feels. You want to be heard, whatever it is, and you're, sometimes you just want to be heard. And a courtroom is a very important place for you to be heard. You're not being heard when you're a cattle call docket, or I'm telling you, you're on the hole, and getting the exit signs over there. So it's just safety standpoints, but it's, so that's, so she showed her courtroom. I wanted to explain, which I did some of that today, how we have run, how sometimes I'll try to compensate on my dockets. And there was a day, fairly recently, where Judge Lopez and I were trying to get together and we couldn't, so she came over on a Tuesday during my lunch hour so we could have a working lunch and go through some stuff. That didn't happen because I heard that she was in the building, and I grabbed a stack of people that needed to be seen because my head was underwater. I said, give these to Judge Lopez, see if she can get her robe on. She didn't have to come ask me, like, what's wrong with you? Well, what's, she knew. She went out in the hallway and was calling cases in a hallway, trying to resolve cases because I'm drowning in the courtroom and I'm trying to go as fast as I can. So that's, it's not only that we're doing a disservice to our citizens, the judiciary, we're doing a disservice to people who come to Lee Summit, people who don't live here but they wanted to patronize our downtown and they got a parking ticket. Well, you're gonna sit there for two hours until you pay that parking ticket. So we're doing, because they're also increasing in population as Lee Summit is. And so, yeah, she did what she could, and then she bounced, and we couldn't have our meeting. But for example, like on a Tuesday, my docket times are 8:30, 9:30, 10:30, 1 o'clock, 1:30, 2:30, and 3:00. So when we discuss these meetings that we need to have, and her docket times might be a little different, but it's the same concept. So when we talk about the meetings, she had a list of meetings that we do, but we're kinda not doing them. We don't have the time. Because I don't know when I could possibly, in between seven dockets, allow someone to be heard and visit with the people from Rediscover, or adequately support and watch what staff are doing, which actually is, comes back on us. It's gonna come back on us if an error is made, and we can get our ticket pulled. We could lose our spot on the judiciary and be removed if we're not adequate, if something's happening under our supervision and we're not providing it, but we're not there. Now, something I wanted to clarify that Judge Lopez brought up, because it might be a little confusing, some of the courts that she referenced has more than one courtroom. We have one. So when she says six days per week, you probably, I would have thought, oh, Monday through Saturday, or you know, or whatever. That's not what we're referring to. We're referring to six total. So for example, it could be, she has three, I've got three, but two of hers are spent in the courtroom, two of mine are spent in the courtroom, and that would cover four days. Then we need, we genuinely need a day to overlap where she can, you know, one of us is gonna go do prisoners. We need to be meeting on a regular basis with our court administrator. We need to meet weekly. That's not happening because we don't have the time. We need to meet, we had a goal where it was suggested to us to meet with our court administrator and the deputy court administrator once a month. We haven't had the time, so it's not happening, and we're not meeting with some of those partners. We can't meet with the police department. Again, we don't have time, and so that's what we're requesting. It'll make us better and we can provide better service. And some of the dockets, and like the police department came to us about a grant, wanting to do a mental health docket, but we don't have the time to implement a new docket. The police department also said, if you had a dedicated theft docket, we could get a retail detective there who's more fluent in theft in the area. Well, that would be ideal, but we don't have time for that docket. That's why we need more time to do this. And the, someone with, a high-ranking official in the police department said, the calls for service and officer activity has increased incrementally over time, but docket days and changes have not, docket days and times have not changed. And also, the police department has concerns over the parking when we have our court days because we're overflowing, and sometimes people are parking on the streets, and they have concerns with the interactions, as I referenced before, and officer wait time in trials. And also, we are not afraid to put people in jail, and we've blown the jail budget pretty well and pretty early. And in conversations with the police department, if we were there doing a daily in custody docket, not just like a weekend arraignment, we could get more cases resolved or get more people moved or get people on, out on home detention, because we are getting calls on our off time, right, we're not really ever off, on our other time, saying, hey, we're at capacity, we have nowhere else to put anyone, all of our affiliates are full, we're full, we need you to release somebody. We don't want to release anyone. We put them there, but we have to. So we have to go through and try to figure out, you know, the best of the worst of what, how we're gonna handle it. And that's actually something new that, it's happened in the past, but it's happening a lot more because we just have so many cases. And for example, I discussed that I had a 1 o'clock docket and I have a 1:30 docket. My 1 o'clock docket is inmates. Well, we generally have, I would say a conservative average would be 15. Well, if each person had five minutes, now, these are people that are in custody, who their liberty is obviously at risk, they're in custody. Oftentimes, maybe they're argumentative, or there's a mental health issue, and we have to focus and listen to what they're saying to see how we can address it. But if, in the, there's a delay because you gotta put one inmate up before another one can come out, we do them via a screen. And if they just got five minutes each, maxed out, you only get five minutes, that's 75 minutes. We've allotted 30. Today, my in custody docket, that's supposed to be over at 1:30, went until 2:30 or 3:00. So that meant my domestic violence docket, everybody had to sit there until I could start calling their names at 2:30 or 3:00. There's no other time to do those dockets. In addition, there's, you know, dockets we'd like to be doing. We need to do a bond forfeiture docket, but we haven't had the time, so I guess you could say that's an added responsibility. We think it's very simple. We have a consensus, more time is an additional duty. If you're there one day a week and then you're there three days a week, that is an additional duty. And there's no case law and no law that says that that's not the case. So that's something to keep in mind. I lost my train of thought. Oh, like we have bond forfeitures, we need to have a bond forfeiture docket. Last year, or no, it was this year, I grabbed as many files, I can't take it, this stack of files, I took them home, and I went through them on my own time, which when we're doing these things is taking away from our other professional responsibilities and away from our families. But I sat there and did bond forfeitures. In a matter of three weeks, I grabbed $55,000 of money that belonged to the citizens. It belonged to Lee Summit. And there was more there that I saw that could have been grabbed, but the opportunity was lost. Defendants are using us as a savings account because we don't have a bond forfeiture docket. So that is something that we have to get going, and that's only right. And there's more to grab, but we don't have time for the docket. There's, I could go through all the meetings that we need to have. I've got a list of them, but I'm not gonna go through them ad nauseam. But as far as some of the other courts, she referenced some of the other dockets, we're so far behind. Like Independence has had a mental health court docket for 30 years, same with Sugar Creek, Raytown's had one 16 years. There are dockets that, they've got mental health courts of some version, drug courts, bond forfeiture dockets, veterans dockets, warrants set aside dockets, and those are very important because we're too busy for people to come in and ask us to set aside their warrant. We don't have the time. Well, we also don't have the time to have a warrant set aside docket. So what does that mean? It means a police officer has to be out there on the road, and he's gonna have to arrest somebody on their outstanding warrant for a speeding ticket because we can't get them in, when all the other courts are having this and getting these people in. And so those are, it's a lot of things that we need to do, but we need to have the additional time to do it. And in order to do that, we are asking you to be competitive with the time that we're there, and we're asking you to be, in turn, be competitive, not above, just average, with what that compensation is for what they're doing. And she, and then I'll just end with, she did reference some of the types of cases. And I'm not talking about any pending cases that we have, but sometimes I look around and I'm amazed at what I see in the courtroom that I do not ever see out in the city. It's just shocking to me. I drive down 291, I have a lovely time, messed up, get something, but there's such an underbelly that we're protected from by the police department and by everybody, by you guys, people who are involved in the system, that we don't see a lot of this, but we see it. You know, when you talk about child abuse, well, okay, oh yeah, nobody likes child abuse. Okay, well, what we see is, we have a case of a kid whose parent dropped, did a swing drop kick and kicked him in the chest. Those are the kinds that we're, things that we're seeing. Animal abuse, well, you know, you shouldn't hit your dog. No, we're talking about dead animals in hoarding situations, being pulled out. That's what we're seeing. And we've had threats to kill us and kill the mayor and things, but it just kinda gets common to us to see these things, and the officers, they're not getting yelled at by defendants. They are getting punched, spit on, kicked in the groin, and it's up to us, whenever they come to us for a disposition, to be able to have the time to listen and to address it accordingly. And so, you know, similarly, I'll just end with, we are elected by the citizens, a gentleman said earlier, you guys are elected by citizens that care. We're elected by those same citizens that care, and citywide, and they trust us to make the decisions for the judiciary, and we're coming to you, telling you, our judiciary is under stress, and we need you to make the investment in us so that we can provide the level of service and commitment that the city needs.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you. I'm gonna have counsel, we're gonna go around to counsel now. So there'll be questions and comments, so we'll start with Councilmember Shields.
Thank you, Mayor. First, I just wanna say thank you guys for your time tonight, for being here, for bringing some of these issues to our attention. I think we share with you a desire to prioritize our citizens and providing them with good service, and I appreciate the, what you said about being collaborative, trying to find a way together to do that. So I just wanted to start with that. Kind of a, just a question, I think, for staff. I know our city attorney, Mr. Head, has had to recuse himself on some of these issues. I know we have some outside counsel, written opinion that we can rely on. In terms of questions about provisions of our charter and that kind of thing, who would I direct those questions to, or just generally, and then can Mr. Head speak on those generally, or what do we do tonight?
So you're correct, we've been using outside counsel for our legal advice, for myself, as well as for you all as legislative branch. So if you have legal questions, I would need to reach out to our outside counsel, depending on what the question is.
Okay. Well, I'll throw them out, and we'll see what we can get answered and-
See if we need to-
See what we can figure out. So first question, you know, we've kinda touched already on the Missouri statutes and constitution in terms of what that allows with respect to compensation for additional duties. Our charter has its own provision stating that we can't provide additional compensation until after an intervening election. Does the same case law apply to that, that additional duties can allow for that, or do the provisions of our charter, are those different?
Yeah, and so I thought about that too, and appreciate the question. I will tell you that I did touch base with our outside counsel on this. I will caveat this very briefly, without a ton of research by our outside counsel. So this is just their initial thoughts without a deep dive or any research, and the feedback is, here's what they think. As Missouri law says the same thing as our charter does, but there's case law out there that define the additional duties exception. The thought is, generally, the provisions in a city charter need to comply with the state law, which is what we would be doing in this case. So that exception at the case law level would apply down to the charter level.
Okay, thank you. This is probably a question for you, so you say that. We've talked before about doing, I believe we called it, an audit of the municipal court to kinda look at best practices and that sort of thing. Is that still being planned, and what would kind of the timing be on that?
Yep, anticipated questions in that space too. So that audit is being conducted right now, started in October, and it's planned to go through into February, perhaps the beginning of March, and there are certain phases of that. And so we're in this information gathering phase and stakeholder engagement phase of that audit. And so the operational analysis will come after that, with then the project deliverables being the recommendations and best practices and things like that at the conclusion of that process.
Okay, thank you. And then I was looking at our charter and what it states about municipal judges, how they are selected, their qualifications, that kind of thing. And I didn't see anything in there specifically about the number of days per week or how their dockets are structured. Who, just generally, who determines that, and how would that be set?
I'm gonna grab the chart.
Yeah, I'm looking at, it just says, like, municipal judges shall have such powers and duties as are conferred upon such officers by law or by ordinance. And I wasn't sure, do we set any of that by ordinance, or how does that work?
As far as establishing the number of dockets and the number of days, it's silent. That's, I would say, that's up to the judges' discretion as to how to structure those. So that's not determined by you all, myself, the citizens, that's based on municipal court functions directed by the judges.
And then for something like a specialty court, that's kinda been touched on a little bit in terms of, that could be a mental health court, drug court, veterans court. I know we've talked a little bit about in committee, the difference between like a formal specialized docket that's certified through the state and versus kind of an informal docket where you group certain kinds of cases together and try to have resources in the room. And so I feel like my thought would be the more informal route, that might be something the judges can decide. For the more formal route, is that still something that they can put in place, or is that something that we would put in place by ordinance, or how would that work?
To my knowledge, it wouldn't be by ordinance. That'd be the judges working with the state courts to go through the process to be formally recognized as a mental health court or a drug court.
Okay, so it's not something that we would have, that would need to be in our charter or anything like that, it's something that the courts can put into place?
That's my understanding, yes.
So, you know, I've given this a lot of thought, since it has come through, yeah, through finance and budget a couple of times, and we've talked it through. I've listened to the judges talk about what they're going through and what's going on with the court. Was part of the discussion about raising the salaries that is currently going to go into place in May. And I've thought a lot about the, what constitutes a new duty and looked at the opinions that our outside counsel have given us. And my feeling, based on- And my feeling, based on reading our charter and the statutes and the constitutional language myself, and having read through the opinion provided by our outside counsel, is that the number of court days, how the dockets are structured, is at the discretion of the judges and is not, to me, a new duty. Whether you have, if you have a thousand court cases and you want to see them all in one day, or you want to see them over two days. I think of it a lot like how, I know some people who work four tens, I work five eights. It's the same number of hours per week, we just structure it differently. And, and, um, it's not really different in duties, it's just difference in structure. Um, so, I, I feel like that, to me, couldn't justify additional compensation prior to an intervening election. Um, I think the additional supervisory duties that we did codify by ordinance could. And I, and I think that that could justify something in maybe the ten percent range of salary increase as we would think for, um, anyone who is taking on those kind of supervisory duties, that I think that would be justified. For the rest of it, to me, what, what I feel like would make a lot of sense is to finish the court audit and then have a full discussion the same way that we did when we did the last compensation adjustment through the committee process, to talk about, you know, what are the scope of duties? How has the city grown? How has this changed over time? And what would justify, um, changing the overall compensation structure going forward? But I don't, I don't think that's something that could be done without that intervening election. Because when I think about new duties, the growth in population from nineteen eighty to twenty twenty-five isn't a new duty since you were elected to this office. Um, what has changed since, since, um, the honorable judges were elected is the additional administrative duties and possibly, um, the time spent working on, looking into what it takes to put these court dockets in place. It'd also be, because there is, there is, uh, even before you're certified to have these courts, there's a process of working with the state and looking into the requirements and figuring out what that would entail and cost, and, and there would be a lot to that. So, I would also be open to maybe discussing some kind of an increase based on that. But I think that, that's where I would come down. Um, I think if we took that through committee, something that I would really want to see is more information on comparators. As I was looking at what we had when we, when we discussed this compensation package, uh, in twenty twenty-four. Because we, we did, um, just prior to any of this discussion, we had, um, a discussion in committee and then at council about, um, you know, we hadn't set salaries for elected officials, mayor, council, and judges in several years. Inflation had been really intense, as everybody will, will remember. And so we basically ended up doing a cost of living adjustment to account for inflation. But when we did that, we said, hey, before we go and change salaries, let's see what other comparable municipalities do, right? So we looked at council salaries and said, well, okay, you know, in, in, um, North Kansas City, council makes thirty-six hundred dollars a year in Overland Park, they make twelve thousand, and Lenexa, they make twelve. And so we said, okay, we're in the ballpark. We're not going crazy if we do a little cost of living adjustment. And we also looked at judge salaries, and the comparators that... Mm-hmm.
Sorry.
So, and I apologize, I might have said thirty-six thousand, thirty-six hundred. But, so I'm looking at, um, a very small spreadsheet that I need to make a little bit bigger on my screen. Um, but...
Oh, gotcha.
Point being, that when we looked in twenty twenty-four, the comparator cities that this, that city staff pulled for us when we were just saying, hey, we just want to make sure we're in the ballpark as we were looking at these adjustments, they pulled things like Liberty, Raytown, Grandview, Harrisonville, which admittedly are all smaller cities than we are. Um, but they had salaries that ranged from, you know, fourteen thousand to forty-one thousand to eighty thousand in Lenexa. So, when we were looking at this, when we set the compensation last time, we said to ourselves, well, we seem like we're in the ballpark, and so let's, let's just do the cost of living increase. But that said, the, the comps that the judges have brought to us that involve some cities that are maybe a little bit closer to our size are different. And so I'd really like to see a more, um, full look at comparator salaries, what other municipalities doing, how many days a week they're doing, that kind of thing, and have a more full discussion about this. Um, I guess the, the last thing I want to say is, you know, when I think about these additional duties, I also think about it in terms of what could the next elected official do or not do, right? That these are elected positions, that each judge will be up for election in a year or in four years. And if someone else were elected to this position, could they say, oh, I want to go back to doing one day a week, but keep the additional compensation? And so I want to make sure whatever we're putting in place isn't just based on the current discussion tonight, but just looking at what we think the needs of our city are and what we think are justified going forward, long-term, and what maybe we need to think about, um, how we structure this. I, I, so, I guess I've been, I've been talking long enough, but basically, I take this really seriously. I do think it's something that we need to talk about and have a more full discussion about. But I do think for any substantial increase like we're talking about tonight, I think that needs to go through the committee process and be put into place after an intervening election, just like we do for all elected officials. But I, depending on what my colleagues say, I would certainly be open to a more incremental increase based on the specific additional duties since, um, each judge was elected. So, thank you.
Okay.
All right, thank you. Yes.
May I respond?
Yeah.
Um, I understand, uh, respectfully, outside counsel, counsel provided an opinion. Um, outside counsel doesn't have any municipal experience. And it's my understanding that outside counsel concluded that an additional docket, such as a mental health court docket, would be an additional duty. But there is no case law that says additional time increase or tripling the amount of time that you're there is not an additional duty. It really, like, just, I, I have trouble understanding how tripling the amount of time of your obligation and increasing your dockets is just not an additional duty, which brings you out of the intervening election. And if we wait till intervening elections, it, it, our citizens will suffer. I mean, it's, and people who come through are just gonna suffer because we, we're telling you as the judges, we're under stress and we're not adequately, uh, serving them. And, yeah, and some of the cities that you mentioned with the, they are smaller, but they have court, you know, one, maybe one day a month. Uh, maybe it's, uh, two evenings a month. And so, there are a lot of factors that go into it, and that's why we tried to provide, work hard and provide all of the information that we could. And it's also so that we could kind of get ahead of it and not delay things because we are, we are struggling. And we're just wanting the investment in the public safety that is, um, gratefully extended to the police department and the fire department. We're asking you to invest in us as well as we are. We're just not doing as well as, we're, we're, you can look at the screen. We're just, we're not there, we're behind.
Uh, Mayor, do I still have the floor?
Yeah, you do still have the floor.
Okay. Um, I guess one, one point that I had written on my sheet that I didn't make was, I think about this again a lot like I think about counsel, that we just adopted our schedule of meetings for the year a week or two ago. Um, and counsel sometimes is more than I expected when I got on here. But we, we choose to have usually three evening meetings a month. We could increase that to four or five or six if we didn't want to go until midnight sometimes. But, but we don't, we prefer to do it one night. Um, there are more committee, you know, and liaison assignments sometimes than I had expected. I know I'd be on a couple of committees. I didn't know I'd also be liaison to two or three different organizations. And that, but that's fine, like, I, I'm here to serve. I do this on my nights, on my weekends, on my lunch hours. I take PTO to meet with city staff. It's just, to me, part of what it is being elected official. Again, not to say that I'm not open to a longer-term discussion about this, but I think everyone on this dais understands what it is to have a set of duties and then to have to work your schedule around it. So, thank you.
If I may respond, yes, we are public servants. Um, but similarly, our, uh, police officers are public servants. And, but they are paid competitively with other cities. And if they work late or overtime, they're compensated. And oftentimes, people see teachers as public servants, who, yes, they might have to work overtime with their salary and stuff like that. But they are also compensated, um, equitably and competitively with other cities when we are not. Um, and, uh, oh, so, and a, a huge crux of that is us also supervising people. I, it, it's very important, and you can only supervise people sometimes if you're there. We need to be there. We, we see shortcomings, but we can't remedy them, um, be, because we're not there and, and we don't have the time. So, um, yes, if, if we were paid competitively, we could use free time to do that, but we cannot because we have to work other jobs to supplement what we're making. And, uh, it's difficult. So, again, we're just asking to be competitive with time and compensation with the other cities. And we're gonna provide the additional duties, that's what we want. We want that.
I have a bunch of other councilmembers that have been waiting to also comment. No, you're good. I just want to try to give everybody, get everybody involved in the conversation. If that's good, Councilmember Shields, you...
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Pryor?
Thank you. Um, I just wanted to say I'm glad you guys are finally here before us. Um, I'm sorry that you guys have felt so unheard for so long. And, um, I fully agree with you. You guys need to get paid more. Unfortunately, our city has a long history of not paying public safety workers the way that they should. Um, so I am fully in support of you. I don't know the amount, but, um, I, yeah, I just wanted to say I'm sorry that you guys, it took so long for you guys to get heard and get before us. And, but you're here now, so hopefully, hopefully we can get something figured out. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Hodges?
Thank you. So I just have a few questions, just to make sure that I'm understanding what you guys are saying. So, um, I know Judge Lopez was saying, or at least the, the chart was saying six days, and then Judge Alteri cleared up and said it's, you know, not quite six days. So, will that be four days total that court will be open? So two days each, and then one, one day each for administrative, basically, day? Is that right? So four days, it's going from two days currently to four days operating as a court system?
It's gonna be five days, just like afternoons to mess it together. Yeah, essentially, yes. I, I think that...
So we're gonna double our time where the court is open to, to provide more service to the citizens, is what you're saying?
Yes, so we'll go from two days to four days. And then that additional day, it, uh, depends on, you know, we have to work with the police department, for example. So we can't just say, oh, well, we're just gonna have court on Thursday. Or, uh, we already do, sorry. We're just gonna have court on Wednesdays. Well, that doesn't work for us because we have management meetings. So it could, uh, be where Wednesday mornings, we have meetings because we can have meetings with certain individuals, and we'll dedicate Friday mornings, so then they'll be, so it, it'll be, we're gonna overlap a day. How that is, I'm not sure, because it depends on who we need to meet with and who we need to address. But otherwise, yeah, we, we need more court. That, that's exactly where we're at.
So essentially, though, I'm understanding, right? It's basically, you're wanting to double the court time, though. So, people aren't sitting in court longer, and...
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, and I, I think one thing that we had talked about earlier, and I don't know if, if it came across earlier, but, um, is actually on, probably on Friday, which would make more sense, we will still be there. We will still have a docket in the morning, at least do the prisoners. And there's some stuff that we can set there that we don't have time for during the week. We might be able to set a trial, depending on the officer's availability. So, we will probably have an afternoon, maybe where we overlap. We're both gonna be in the courthouse on Fri, we thought about probably Friday. So court Monday through Thursday, and then Fridays, prisoner docket in the morning, and then what other, other dockets we need to put there that have come up during the week, and then maybe afternoons for meetings with court staff and things.
And, yeah, and that, like, fifth day where we're overlapping, uh, you know, she might be in there. I recently had a trial, which is not my first time that this has occurred, that involved minors. And it's very, it's an open courtroom. It's very daunting if you're twelve years old and you have to come testify in front of a bunch of strangers. And so, if we had the additional time, she might be, you know, doing some of the meetings that, because we do try to conquer and divide some, because we're spread thin. But that would be, okay, special setting for this trial, I'm gonna do it on this date because I've got minors that are involved. Or oftentimes, for example, DWI trials will take an extended amount of time. So I read the seven docket times to you. Well, if you throw in a two-hour trial, well, it, it, it's all a mess. And I'll actually have to take breaks and interrupt testimony throughout the trial because I have to try to get other people out of the courtroom that are there waiting. And, um, and trials sometimes go, sometimes they go away. They're, they're fluid, so you can't base everything around a trial. But if you've got that day where we're there, and I might have to say, hey, we're gonna have to table our discussion, my trial's a go, I'm doing that all morning, then, uh, that's what we would do.
Okay. Um, so I'm just curious, and maybe you said this, so I apologize if I missed it, but on average, about how many cases are you guys doing per day?
Well, like, I can answer you, um, on some of those pictures you've seen. You know, I, I might have eight hundred, nine hundred cases a day. Um, in comparison, like, if you go to Kansas City Municipal Court, they might have, you know, a hundred and fifty, two hundred. And that's why they are able to spend so much more time with those. We just, we have to squeeze everything on the two court dates a week. So, I can't give you an exact number because we, those numbers are very fluid because sometimes in my dockets, we'll start at a thousand, but then maybe we'll have two hundred of them not show up. And sometimes they get continued. So, I know, it, it's not a number, I can't give you an exact number because, like, maybe we have like a thousand cases written that month, but it doesn't mean we only see them one time, if that makes sense. So I can't tell you what every docket looks like exactly. But they're pretty, pretty...
But again, that's gonna help with the four days, spreading those out in those four days to make more...
I, I can tell you, we have hundreds of people every time we have dockets. And, uh, there was a reference earlier, you know, it's kind of like, well, you know, you knew there'd be a population increase and you signed up for it. Well, um, I was able to grab in twenty twenty-two, uh, filed that year. So that doesn't count the cases that have all been continued and dragging on and the probation violations. But there was, in twenty twenty-two, nine thousand nine hundred and seventy-seven, when I took office in twenty-two. And in twenty twenty-three, they filed thirteen thousand five hundred cases. There was a thirty-six percent rise from the year I got elected in twenty-two until twenty-three. So there's a huge difference. And then, uh, an off, and, and trying to help us get where, with the more days and where we need to go, um, one of the sergeants emailed, emailed me a random statistic just to let me know that in twenty twenty-three, I mean, like volunteered it. In twenty twenty-three, they had, uh, they filed three hundred and sixty-six stealing citations. In twenty twenty-four, they filed eight hundred and thirty. That's because they're dedicating a lot of resources to that, and they've actually invited us to the retail theft meetings. But I haven't been able to go because of other conflicts. Um, I wanted to go, but I've got to book my other time doing other things. Um, to support my family. But I think, uh, that, I think, oh, yeah, Judge Lopez went, and she told me about it. So we, we're trying to do that, but, uh, I think I'm, maybe I got off on what you were asking. I'm sorry.
No, you're fine.
Councilmember?
Um, no, I, I think you answered my question, I appreciate it. But I have just a couple more questions. I think it's more geared towards staff answering them. Um, but I do appreciate you guys answering questions. Um, so, have we thought about updating our court system as far as our court building? Like, is, maybe that's a little out of date? We, what, do we have one courtroom? So even if you wanted to work on the same day and just knock things out, they have no opportunity to do that. So why are we not focusing on maybe updating things there? Because I'm sure that, I don't know when the last time that was looked at or updated. So, can we modernize that a little bit, or could that be a future plan?
That is part of the municipal court audit. We've asked for them to look at operations, procedures, best practices, even the physical layout of the space.
Okay, so that's something that we are actually looking into and possibly investigating as a future plan, then?
Based on what their recommendations would be, right? And, and, and just in considering that, right? It, it folds into changing of the operations, right? How many dockets are you running, uh, those types of things? So they all kind of connect together, yep.
Okay, so, and then, I guess along that same thought, so, obviously, would, it would, this next question would need to be, if that happened? Um, but, I mean, adding a third judge, would that be... would need to be if that happened, but, I mean, adding a third judge, would that be something that we could entertain, or that would be something we should do? Because, I mean, again, obviously, with a one courtroom, it's probably not ideal with them having to split, but, I mean, is that something that we should look into in the future as well?
That is an option that could be explored, yes.
Okay.
The charter calls out, we start with two.
Right.
It doesn't limit us to how many different divisions, but that's a process to prop up an additional division.
Okay. I guess I just want to make sure we're act, these are things that we actually are entertaining and things that we're like, okay, how can we best function? Because, I mean, they're not wrong, we are, I mean, we are a growing city, and we're going to just keep growing, so I feel like we need to make sure we grow with the times in every division of our city. So, I want to do that in whether it's building or judges. So, I just want to make sure we're actually entertaining those in reality. So, okay, I think, thank you guys for answering the questions. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
We did have a renovation, the most major renovation that we've had in the last 10 years since we share the space with the police department, and our space got cut, so, to make more room for the police. So, our courtroom was cut, and our other areas were cut. We recently got a small renovation, but it was more just rearranging things modularly to try to accommodate and give us some more room. And so, I got excited when you discussed, you know, revamping that area. I know there's, I think, a public operations building, I sound ignorant, but like, going in or something for the police department and...
Joint Command Center.
Command Center.
Joint Command Center.
And we just haven't experienced anything like that. And what was the other thing?
The third judge.
Oh, the third judge. That could be something, I would say, more judges could be revisited in the future. There's not generally a third judge when you look at the, what's on the screen, because three sometimes doesn't work. It's two against one, and so, in working on that, when that gets considered in the future, I think it's a good thing to talk about if we have the space to accommodate, and then, you know, what would be the best practice when we get there. But we feel like, right now, we can make a big push, and then maybe we have things fluid, and we don't need to spend more money on another judge, or we don't need to do those things, or maybe we do. I don't know. But I think us being there would really be telling, and then we could tell you what our experience is. We can still be complaining, or we could say, hey, this is great, thank you for the investment, we're doing it now.
And the comparable cities are all doing it with the same two or less. Councilmember, you're good. All right, thank you. Councilmember Funk?
Thank you, Mayor. So, on your list, Judge Maxwell Lopez, the comparable cities, so, don't laugh at my knowledge, so Kansas City, Kansas, Alatha, Columbia, Topeka, all these comparable cities, are they all elected?
The only, I don't believe any of these on this list are elected. I believe those are all appointed.
Okay. So, I know back in committee, Councilmember Shields and I spent some time with you guys. So, where are we on the mental health court? I know that was a big thing we talked about, that that's definitely an added duty, and I know we had to figure out what the steps were we had to go through to get to being certified, I guess it is, for the mental health court. Have we started that process? I know you guys, you had mentioned you started doing your research and things like that of what steps we were going to have to take.
No, we haven't gone anywhere because that will require us to do a lot more, investing a lot more time in that, to get some training, and we can't do it on the existing dockets. There's just no room to add it in, there's no time to add it on the existing dockets. So, we haven't done anything further, we've kind of been waiting to see how this process plays out.
Okay. But if that was something, a duty that I think we go through as we process through this audit, that would be a duty we would be adding to you to say, hey, we need to go research this, and we need to get to the point of being certified to be a mental health court. So, I would think that would be an added duty along with the court supervision. I think, I wish there was some comparable cities that, like, had elected judges of how they structured their compensation, because I think my question for staff would be, if looking at the compensation structure and adding in retirement, how would that work for an elected position? Is there so many years before you're vested?
Yeah, with the Missouri Loggers program, there's a five-year, five-year tenure before you're vested in the retirement system. And so, with elected positions, right, our charter calls out for four-year terms of elected judges, so.
So, it would be, it would weigh more to add that to compensation versus doing that to retirement, because a judge may go four years, not get reelected, and lose that benefit in a sense, correct?
That's, that would be a good, good way to put it, yes.
Okay. I think the other, I know I shot out an email, and it was very short notice, but would you be able, or is there a determination to find out what we're spending on police officers in overtime that are hung up, maybe not getting their case heard, or they're there for a one o'clock docket, and they're there on overtime until four or five? Would we be able to see that number? It may be something hard to...
I don't think we categorize overtime down to that level of detail related to, you know, pending, you know, appearances at court. I'm looking at chief, just, yeah, I don't think we slice it down to that level of detail.
I mean, I appreciate you guys coming, and I do look at the fact from the 1980s to today that we've grown, and we've grown in officers, which obviously means we've grown in court cases, and I think, I would like to understand this audit, but I do feel like we see a lot of mental health cases. I love being involved in the youth court and learning more and more through the folks at Rediscover and Lees Summit Cares, that I think that's important, and I think as an additional duty, yes, compensation is well deserved to get this mental health court thing off the ground and moving forward, and I think, you know, maybe if that helps with justifying some case time and some additional compensation, I would be for that. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Carlisle?
Thank you, Mayor. So, I appreciate you both coming and presenting this information to us as well, and I appreciate the heartstrings pulls there, but I'm more of a data kind of girl, so what I'm missing from this entire presentation are the numbers of cases. And so, that tying, I can understand tying cases to population. I mean, that's obvious, the more population you have, the more tickets and whatever you're going to have. But if I can't see, you know, in 2010, we averaged X amount of cases on our docket, and then in 2015, X amount, you know, the progressive, or is it choppy and it jumps all around? So, without that data, it's really hard for me to consider tying those two things together. And I completely feel your pain when you're talking about, you know, the amount of time spent outside the courtroom on this elected position, because we obviously are only here one day a week as well, but I could guarantee you, I spend most weeks, at least 40 hours a week, just preparing for this meeting. And that's not any of the other meetings I have, or liaison assignments, or phone calls from constituents, or emails from constituents. So, that's just preparing for the one meeting. So, it's, I mean, as an elected official, it's kind of what we get. So, then, I saw that you have the docket, and that docket sheet is kind of confusing to me. So, I wrote it down, and so you have a general docket, and so I'm assuming that within your general docket is, like, every ticket that's out there? And then, there's like a codes docket, so that's just only people that have violated codes, like the codes department? Is that what that is?
That is when codes are set, but we're spread thin, so we don't dedicate, that's when code cases are set, but it's not dedicated to codes. We have to overlap DWIs and everything else, and the codes people have to sit there.
And wait.
And wait.
Okay. Sorry. So, that's, so that goes as well for, so you, it had, like, they were all in colors. So, it was like domestic violence docket and the animal control docket, and so those are just placeholders, but none of them really exist, is what you're telling me?
Yeah, that, yeah, so, it's not a docket, it's just when we hear those cases, with the exception of the domestic violence docket, those cases are heard at 1:30 on Tuesdays. I hear those cases. But with that being said, in between those, I grab other ones that have come in. So, I'll grab a DWI, I'll try to shove in, I always take domestic, domestic violence comes first, so if I get that, it's going to trump anyone else, but I'll try to squeeze anything else that I can during that time. And in looking, in referencing what you mentioned earlier about seeing the number of cases, it would be, I understand why you'd want to see that, and so that's why I mentioned that, like, that one year that someone sent me was a 36% rise in filed case from one year to the next, but us doing cases that way is us doing them by way of cattle calls, you're in the hole, you can't get in the courtroom yet, and so...
Yeah, I understand all of that. What I was trying to say in that is that there are parameters that we have to live within, and that means that we can give you additional pay for additional duties. So, if we're trying to tie these things together, like, there's got to be something for me to say, this is, this is why I thought this was an additional duty, because when she got elected in '22, this was the caseload, and then '23, this was the caseload, and then '24, this, you know? So, I have to be able to tie that to something, just not how I feel about how busy you guys are, right? I feel like I have to tie that to data to live within the parameters that the charter gives us to live within.
What I would encourage you to think of is, we would be there, we would have twice as many dockets, which is an additional duty, and when you see the overcrowding, that lends itself to, we need you guys there more, and we need you involved more. And so, us foregoing other opportunities or professional obligations, like, she'd have to, she'd have to cut one off that she does on Wednesdays, but she's willing to do that because we need to improve. But it really is, we would be there more than twice as much as we are now so that we could serve, you know?
Right. Yeah, I understand. We get, as we are up here, when I first got elected in whatever year it was, you know, we were pretty busy, but we weren't having meetings every single, well, back then it was Thursday, I think, Thursday meetings. We weren't having them every single week, right? But we were still here till 1:00 in the morning a lot of the time, because that's just how far our meetings went. Now, you know, I know how our job goes, and so I can assume how yours does as well with population and busyness, but that's just assuming. I can't, I can't tie it to anything. Okay, so then, let me see.
Can I respond to that?
Sure.
Okay, so, so you said you're assuming. So, you saw our docket sizes, there, we, I mean...
You mean the amount of people in the room?
The amount of people in the courtroom, yeah. I can't give you an exact number. We were told at Finance and Budget, it doesn't matter how many cases we're seeing, we can't get more money, because we, it doesn't matter how many cases. So, we didn't get those numbers for you, and I don't know that we can't get those numbers. I would like to see those numbers, too. We know, because we are dealing with it every week, we are dealing with people who are having to sit in the dockets and sit in the courtroom for two and three hours, people drop their kids off for the bus, or have to go pick their kids up from the bus stop. There are people, I have had people just leave because they have to go get their kids, and they haven't been seen yet. So, it's, for us, it's a reality of how many cases we're doing, we're serving the public, we are supposed to be helping promote public safety, we're supposed to be taking care of our citizens, and we're not doing that when we're having court two days a week. We're responsible for supervising the court, we're responsible for the decisions on hiring in the court, responsible for making sure that everybody is dealt with in the terms of how many days that the state gives us to rerain people, we are responsible for doing all that. We're going above and beyond as it is. We were, I worked all, you know, half the weekend just doing arraignments and things like that. I don't mind that. What I do mind is when people get upset with us because we make them wait two and three hours to be seen, but we can't do anything else because the docket sizes are so big. So, even though we're public servants, and we totally agree, you guys are public servants, and we understand that, but even as public servants, we should, the other cities have found out, found a way to accommodate their growth and their population by giving their judges more money so they can be there more court dates. I can't be there every single day like I would like to, because I, because the compensation is so low. As you can tell, we're way behind every single city that are comparable. And the smaller cities that are having dockets that they looked at earlier, that are having dockets two or three times a month, you can't really compare them to what we're doing, because it's not apples to apples. That's why we tried to give you guys apples to apples. And we should be paid competitively if we're going to be doing the same job, whether we're public servants or not, we should still be paid competitively as other judges are in the area in our vicinity.
And I understand that. Thank you, ma'am, but we don't need that. I understand that completely, but these comparator cities, as Mr. Funk asked, are appointed, and they look very well to be full-time judges. Our charter sets our judges up, obviously, as part-time, or else the pay would be better, right? It obviously sets us as part-time as well, else the pay would be better. So, I don't feel comfortable turning our judges from part-time as the charter puts them, that was voted on by the people who also vote for us, and turning them into full-time and increasing their pay to over $100,000. I, I mean, I just, if the Charter Commission wants to look at that and wants to look at increasing our judges to be full-time judges that get full pay, that's fantastic, because then that will go on the ballot, and then the people can decide. I cannot make that decision. I cannot from here. I am told that I can increase your pay after the next election for any additional duties that you have now than you, that you didn't have when you were elected. That's what I'm told I can do.
And we're, we're just asking for a band-aid right now, and that's what I said in the beginning of my presentation. In 2040, like, 14 years from now, our city is going to be about 140,000. And if you look at all of the cities on the chart, 100% of the comparison cities and everybody hired, 100% of them have two full-time judges. The only, the only difference is Columbia, they have one full-time judge that's bigger than us. But we're just asking for a band-aid here, we can't keep limping along.
And I completely understand that. But like I just said, I can't, I can't make that decision from here. That has to be a Charter Commission decision, and so maybe that's something that somebody in staff can take to the Charter Commission, because I don't think I can walk in there and be like, we need full-time judges, so...
And we're not asking to be full-time judges, we're asking just to give us additional compensation so that we can be there more often to address the needs of our city, to address the growth, the number of tickets, the number of people on our dockets, to provide better community customer service to our community.
And I completely understand what you're asking. And again, I can't make that decision from here. But let's go back to numbers. I don't, I don't like getting off on, hold on, let me, let me mark off everything we've said. Okay. So, as far as numbers go, I thought, and I'm looking for it, because I know I read this, that the, yeah, so, local rules of Jackson County courts and our Code of Ordinances both require the court to submit monthly reports of activity to the city. So, if those are... So, if those are submitted monthly, then, then, like, why can't you just pull those numbers easy if they're submitted monthly?
We, we were told at the last meeting that you didn't care what the numbers were, so we didn't pull them. And we could, we could certainly see, and that's another thing, we're not there to make sure those reports are being paid, made. But we could certainly get those numbers. And I think the Police Department probably could give us numbers of, of the cases that they're at, the tickets they're actually writing.
Right. Well, I would just like to, so for staff or whoever's taking notes on this, whatever these required monthly reports from the court of court activity are, I would like to get those and see them. Um, let me see where else I'm going here. Okay, 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 okay. I got that, I got that. I'm sorry, guys, I just have to, since I got off of my list. Oh, one thing I did here, I remember. So, somewhere it was said, and I'm not, I don't remember which one of you said it, I'm sorry. But it said that to pay a parking ticket, they have to wait? They can't just pay a parking ticket? They have to come see you to pay a parking ticket?
No, that is if you have failed to appear.
Oh, okay. So, just to pay a parking ticket, they, they can do that without having to go to court, correct?
Right.
Okay.
But, um, a lot of people don't. And then they fail to appear and then they have to come see us.
Okay.
Or they wait until the court date to take care of it and then they've got to wait.
So, even if they're there on the day they're supposed to be and they, they can't pay the ticket instead of waiting to see the judge?
Well, if they haven't failed to appear, they can.
Okay. Okay.
A lot of people just check in and go sit in the courtroom too.
Right.
And they don't know that they can pay it or they want to protest it. But a lot of people just go check in at the window. They don't ask about payment. They go sit in the courtroom until their case gets called.
I got you. Okay. Okay, so I've, I've gotten through my list of scribbles here. So, sorry, um, that took a minute. So, from what I heard my other colleagues say, um, I, I would like the additional information as well. Oh, and that's one thing. Councilmember Funk said something about getting these specialty courts that were talked about. And I just, like, I think it's a great idea, but I also looked, because that information was in our packet. And I looked at that and to get a specialty court, we have to also have, for each specialty court, we have to have two additional committees for those courts. Not including the other things. But it says, "Each program is expected to establish a policy committee and an advisory committee for each additional court." And then it lists all of the, um, staff that we would be providing for each court. That is a huge increase in what we currently have. So, I'm thinking that would have to go through the Charter Commission as well. But, but after that, then it has to go through, it says, the Circuit Courts presiding, they have, they have a committee that forms those.
And that, there are different ways to do those specialty courts. And I can tell you that, like, for example, Independence has been doing it for 30 years. And they have developed it, it's called a diversion program. And they still have the mental health care providers. They have everything there. They, they have been developed as informal mental health court where they're, they're still doing the same services and the same people are there, but it's handled differently. That's, uh, Independence, Sugar Creek, Oak Grove, Green, Greenwood, Bait City, Raytown are all doing these. But they're doing kind of a hybrid system that we started studying. And so, that's something that we don't know what the best practice is. We just know we need to have one. And so, it, it's just crucial.
So, we wouldn't have to go through this Missouri treatment court standards?
Nobody else has. Or, I mean, I, that might be the best practice and that might be what we need to do. So, I don't know what, the answer is we need one, but what we need, I think, needs to be a collaborative effort. You know, talk, we need to have more discussions about it.
Okay.
And, and do, and do more research when we can hone in on that. But, uh, yeah, I've visited lots of cities and everyone's doing them a little different. So, what would work for Lee Summit, I, I can't tell you right now.
Okay. And then Mark, is that something that maybe the audit's looking at?
Councilmember Carlisle, could I share with you, I think, I think a good resource?
I give, I give the floor.
Oh, sorry, sorry. I just wanted to share a piece.
I understand.
Okay.
Go ahead, Councilmember Funk. But I'd, I'd rather you ask me to be recognized. Because I'm about to, like, we've been going at this for a while. This is committee work. Mr. Dunning, this is committee work. And we have a lot of business to conduct. And we're not near done because I haven't spoken yet. And I got people lined up behind people that, to go around again. So, I'm going to get my shot in here in a minute too. And we're going to start moving this forward in one way or another, okay? So, go ahead, Councilmember Funk.
My apologies, Mayor. I just wanted to share that we have the resources of Lee Summit Cares and Rediscovered that have helped develop those mental health courts. So, that's a resource.
And the other courts?
Yes, I think they work with the other courts.
Okay, great. Thank you. Thank you. Okay, I yield.
Before I go back around, let me, let's just, we, we're going to have to go back up, Mr. Dunning. And we're going to have to start with you. We want, I, I can speak for everybody up here. I bet everybody up here wants outstanding court operations.
I think we all agree. Service levels, we want to provide the best we can.
All right. This court audit needs to be stellar in giving us guidance. But do you think it's going to say we need more court days eventual, I mean?
It could very likely say.
And if it says that and we as council want more court days, how do we make that happen? Go ask the judges nicely?
Well, to me, it falls back to what levers do we have available to us?
Right. And, and we, I don't have an attorney to ask right now, which, that's not going to work. I, I, it's possible. That's, it's, it's on the table. It's, it's on the table. The point is that we have people that have spoken, I'm sorry you haven't got to speak yet, but, you know, I, it's my turn, that want more data, okay? We can get the court audit. We can get more comparable data, because that's what you, you were talking about, Councilmember Shields. So, you've asked for more data, you've asked, you've asked for more data. But what data are we, are we looking for, right? And the, the court audit is one thing, but we need the comparable cities. We need, we need to figure out what additional duties are. Because that, I can't, she's saying she can't argue it. And our council, our outside council isn't here to give us guidance. And I don't know that she's, our outside council has been available in that way for us. We've got to go back to how we do other outside councils, such as when we're doing it with economic development and, and others. And if we need outside counsel, we need to go get that outside counsel. They need to be here. And we need to talk to them. And we need to ask them questions about additional duties and compensation. And they, and it needs to be somebody that has, that, that is, they better be good. They better be good, Mr. Dunning. And so, we can't have Mr. Head pick that person. It's going to have to be, you know, us, council, okay? So, we have to figure out how to do that. And then we need to talk to them and engage with them. And they need to give us expertise. And we need to dig into this whole additional duties, extra compensation, the charter, how other cities are, why they're appointing and we're electing officials. Because they sure have a lot more flexibility over there on how they get to make decisions. Because the, our charter is limiting us based on what we're reading, what you read to us, based on the statutes. But, but the problem is, we want outstanding court services, just like we have outstanding Development Department, just like we have outstanding Public Works Department, just like we have outstanding police and fire. We want outstanding court operations. So, we have to figure out how to get there and we need a plan. And this court audit, I, I'm hoping it's going to be great, but I'm not sure it's going to give us a blueprint. So, we're going to have to figure this out. And it's going to, we're going to have to get on this. And, but we can't, to our wonderful judges, obviously, we can't make this decision tonight. We need more data. We need more information. And we need more guidance. And we need an expert in the room that's an outside counsel. And from there, we can, it may be that we have to, I'm going to go back. I'm, I've highlighted what each person has said, that we need to formalize. If we're going to, if there's going to be additional compensation, we need to be really specific as to what this is. Additional duties, I mean. If they're going to get paid more for it. We need to be very specific about, um, formalize the number of day, the number of days and duties. I heard that. So that we, you know, we can't manage you all. You all have to manage the court. We need, hold on. More info. I just think that, oh, here's my, here's my, we need to formalize and then the number of days. But we also need to, um, use all of this information to figure out, if we want to force more days, Mr. Dunning, we have to have a mechanism if we want that. Because you're saying that that's the judicial branch and we're the legislative branch. But if we want better court operations, there's, there's probably a way. And we need to know what that path is. Now, it may be that it takes, I'm sorry, judges, it may be that it takes longer to get this done than, because it's obviously taken this long just to get to this point. But whatever the process is, we need to start that, you know? And we definitely need that outside counsel in here that has this kind of expertise. Does that make sense?
Yes.
Okay. So, judges, does that make sense to you?
Yes.
Okay. So, I'm going to go back around and, because I've got people waiting to add on. But we're going to have to wrap this up with those things in mind. Court audit, more comparable cities, defining additional duties. And that means using an outside counsel to define those additional duties. And then we can, heck, we can have one night where we just argue about additional duties. I'd rather it be in Finance and Budget. And, but if I have to come to Finance and Budget just to be a part of the argument, I will. But like, this all needs to, needs, this process needs to start. And we got to figure out how to get where we need to be on, on more days in court. That's the one thing that I, I just, I don't know of how the council feels, but I feel like we do need more days in court, whether we pay you more or not. You know? So, you know, we can ask you nicely to do more days in court or we can figure out how to work something out. So, all right? All right. Councilmember Pryor, I'm going to go back around.
Thank you. Okay. So, I have a few questions. My first question is, Mayor kind of touched on it a little bit, but we obviously need more days. I know Judge Lopez has been there till 9:00 o'clock some nights. That's unacceptable. It's unacceptable to keep our citizens waiting that long. It's unacceptable that she's having to be there that long. So, we obviously need more days. What does that look like? Because I know if we went to a, if we went to anyone in City Hall or police or fire and said, "You have to work extra days for free," that's not going to fly with them. So, what does that look like? How, I know Judge Lopez mentioned a Band-Aid. I don't know. May I please address Judge Lopez? Unlike, what ideas do you have as a Band, like, for a Band-Aid? Because this is just going to get prolonged, like, put off again and again and again because we're obviously waiting on studies that haven't been done. Because this hasn't been addressed like it should have been addressed a long time ago. And so, we just keep putting it off. But you guys need a Band-Aid. It's not working. This is obviously not working. We've gotten angry emails. We've gotten angry phone calls from people that have had to wait. So, what does that Band-Aid look like to you?
Well, what we were proposing is the Band-Aid. Because in 14 years ago, in 14 years, if the projections are correct, we are going to be at 140,000, 140,000 people or maybe even more with all the development of the church lands and all that. It may even be higher than that. So, this is just our Band-Aid because we don't have two court buildings. We don't have two courtrooms. And so, we can't do any more than that. We can have court five days a week and have us there two days a week on Fridays or whatever day we pick. But that's, that is the Band-Aid. The Band-Aid is just, you know, let's start doing court, you know, all, every day of the week so we can try to split all this stuff out and start having, you know, all the things we need to do to make this court run more efficiently and more smoothly and more safely and promote community safety for everybody. But that is, what we propose is the Band-Aid. Because very soon, another council or strategic planning, or I don't know if that'll even happen with strategic planning, but somebody's going to figure out, going to have to figure out how to deal with all of these people who are committing crimes or getting tickets or their dogs are running loose or whatever, and going to have to figure out how to deal with them in a more efficient manner than, than we're able to do at this point. And that we'll be able to do in 14 years, given the current system, which we can't even keep up with the amount that we have now.
Okay. Thank you. And it sounds like, according to Councilmember Carlisle, we can't do the Band-Aid because that we're, we're, the charter kind of binds us. We can't, we can't do the Band-Aid. So, I don't.
Respectfully, we disagree.
Do you? Okay. That's, that's good to know. I don't know, so when it comes to working out a compromise, what does that even look like? I mean, obviously, it's not working here from the dais to them, working out a compromise. How, what does that look like? Mayor, do you know?
Well, when you look at the charter that Mr. Dunning read and Councilmember Carlisle has right in front of me over here, I'm like, um, it's, 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 it hinders us. So, we have to, we have to get into the definitions of the charter or we have to change the charter. Like, it says, "We can't change the charter," correct? The Charter Review Commission changes the, can change the charter. She's, yes, she's saying that it, she's saying that it mirrors, that Councilmember Shields and Carlisle are both saying that the charter mirrors state law, the revised statutes, which Mr. Dunning read at the beginning as well. So, if that's the case, are we, you know, 100 years from now, when there's 250,000 people in Lee Summit, are we still going to have two court days? And do you see what I'm saying? Something's got to give here. We've got to be able to use the process to figure out how to affect change and not, you know, this is where we need the attorney to say, "We don't want to, what's our risk?" You know? "How do we work through the revised statutes and be in compliance, but also make sure that we have enough court days?" I mean, there has to be answers, Mr. Dunning. We're going to have to go find them, you know? Yeah. Go ahead, Councilmember Pryor.
And we do, oh, can I just answer, just to respond to what you said? And I think that's, that's where part of the problem lies, is because it doesn't, it does say that you can't increase a public official, I guess, I don't know if we're considered a public official, a public official's duty during the term of their office. We are not voting on ourselves a raise. We, that's in your purview. We can't, we can't do that. We're not voting for additional compensation for extra duties. That's what you all are, are charged with doing. But we, we disagree completely with part of what our outside counsel said. She said, "Yes, they can be compensated for additional duties." Now, there's no case law that I could find. There's no case law that I saw in any of her reports that said additional day is not an additional duty. And we don't agree that only something brand new is an additional duty. We feel like if we are forced to be there, and I think Judge Alteria mentioned this earlier, if we are having to be there and we're giving the commitment we will be, three additional days a week, then that is the additional duty. We were elected knowing that this court has always run one docket per week per judge. That's how it's been for the last 44 years. One judge, one docket per week. And so, what we are saying is we would like to change that. And the additional duty would be the additional court dates.
Okay. Councilmember Pryor, you still have the floor.
Okay. And I agree with you. I think, um, I know that the attorney that was chosen for us said that an additional day is not an additional duty. I disagree with her. I think it is, it is an additional duty if you guys are expected to work.
And if I could respond, I don't think her report said that. Her report just said that judges can be compensated for additional duties. But it didn't say an additional court date is not.
Last time that we had the discussion, that you guys weren't present. And she told me that it's not an additional duty. I disagree with that.
We weren't told that it wasn't in her report that she filed. Well, we weren't told that, it wasn't in her report that she filed.
Yeah. Um, and I also, I think, while I know I've heard a lot of comparison to council tonight, I don't think you guys can be compared to council. We have the opportu, we have the option, if we wanna respond to emails, or if we don't, we're a bad council member if we're not responding to the emails, but we have that option. We have the option, if we wanna show up to every committee meeting, but we don't have to show up to every meeting, to every council meeting or committee meeting. We're not a great council member if we're not, but we don't have to. And you guys have to do this. So, I don't think that that's a fair comparison. Um, I don't know what it looks like. I hope we can get something figured out. I think it's ridiculous that you guys are so underpaid right now, but I don't know, I don't know how, I don't know how to execute that without any help. And I feel like, I don't know, I feel like this entire discussion's a little premature, because I don't know which even direction we're supposed to go in right now.
Well, I just-
But yeah, no, he, yeah.
We need more information, and we need-
Definitely.
Um, the court audit, we need the additional comparator cities, we need outside counsel that's present and engaging with us, and is willing to, I think, maybe a little bit commit more. Maybe she's, maybe she's, if we're not clear, then she's, she's not being, if we're not clear by now, then she's not being clear with us. She needs to take some stronger, um, positions, or use more language to, to get this through. But we do have concerns about being in compliance. I mean, that's, we do things by the book in Lee Summit, that's what we want to be known for. So, it is a concern, and we want, we want to make sure that we're, we have a strong consensus on this to move forward. So, I don't see how we're gonna do that without outside counsel in the room. Because you, you two are attorneys, and we've got people up here that are legal-minded. But this is obviously, obviously very complicated with regard to the legal implications. So, we can get that guidance, but I think it's gonna have to go through F and B. We can't, finance and budget for the crowd, uh, we, we can't go straight to this again. It's gotta go back through finance and budget, and, and be vetted there. Councilmember Shields, are you okay with that as the chair?
Um, do I have the floor?
Yes, you do.
Okay. Um, so, I'm fine with this going through committee again, but I will say that it went through us a couple of times already, and we felt like we needed some feedback from the full council. We have some of that feedback in terms of some questions that we wanna have answered, and some things that we wanna evaluate. So, maybe the next conversation will be more productive, um, especially if we had outside counsel in the room.
Productive. I think it's been productive, it's just, it's just frustrating, because I feel like we're still, we still got a lot more work to do.
I'm not, I'm not saying this hasn't, but I'm saying, I felt like we hit a wall in committee, and that's why we sent it here, because we felt like we needed the input of the full council. But we can. There, there are a couple of thoughts, though, that I also wanted to share, which are, one, we can, as long as we wait for an intervening election, as long as the position of judge has sat for election again, we can increase the salary to whatever we want to. It doesn't have to be based on additional duties, it doesn't have to be based on anything. We can make that decision as a council, based on our evaluation of the needs of the city, but we don't have to specifically peg it to certain things. So, we could pass today, say, effective as of, uh, 2028, after both judges have sat for election again, the salary becomes this. We have the power to do that anytime. That's within our purview. The question is, if we want a salary to be effective sooner than the person taking it has sat for election, then we need to peg it as certain additional duties. So, I guess part of what I wanna know, as we're looking at this as a committee, is, are we looking at, and what I, I need to know from my colleagues, what they're looking for from me, is, do you want us to evaluate, given the overall, just, "dull" is the only word that I can think of, of the community, the size of the community, the needs of the community, future-looking to 2040, do, do you want us to work on a plan that would be put into place after an intervening election? Or do you want us to try really hard to figure out, well, we can peg to additional duties and have that in place immediately? Or do you want both? Like, do we want to do kinda what I said earlier of an incremental increase right now to reflect certain additional duties, like supervising court staff, and then a longer-term plan going forward? And I feel like that's what I need to know as a committee, of what you guys want us to bring back to you.
Well, I think that's the big question of the night. I think you framed it. If you, if, I know this is, everybody's probably getting tired, but you framed it really well, as in, we can make the change, but based on the way you, you interpret statutes, it can't be until an intervening election.
Right. And I do wanna say one other thing. One of the reasons I like the idea of the intervening election is, this is an elected position, it is accountable to the voters. So, with an intervening election, you can say, okay, the city has provided the resources, we have provided the salary commensurate to pay for the level of service that's needed, we're providing the support staff, we're looking into what the court facilities need, and then in an election, a candidate can run and say, "I am running to make court two days a week for me, and I will provide a higher, higher level of service." Or the existing judge can say, "I am doing that, and this is why you should reelect me." That, that's the accountability measure, to me. Now, there could be something that our Charter Commission changes that really formalizes exactly what the expectation is, but I think it's our, to me, it's our duty as a council to provide adequate resources, and then it's their duty to provide adequate service at the discretion of the voters who have the option to reelect them or not. So, I, I think, like, I understand why we want to really formalize it, and I even kinda said that too, like, how do we guarantee that we get the service that is being promised? But we guarantee it by having accountability before the voters. So, um, that said, I'm happy to take it back through committee. Is it possible to get some kinda consensus about, are we looking for a longer-term plan?
I think we need, before we go to the committee, don't, don't we need this, don't we need the, the audit? When's the audit gonna be done, Mr. Dunning?
Timeline, right, timeline right now is February, end of February.
Really? Hmm.
They're presenting it in March, right?
I think they try to wrap up their, their report in February, probably presentation early March.
Okay. What about the comparator data, Mr. Dunning? Can you have staff work on this?
Yes, we can, we can take the information here and try to put some more data to that. And, you know, I heard number of cases, things of that nature, just more granular, granular data.
And then can you, at least you and I start talking, and then come to council with a plan for another outside council member?
Yep.
Counselor.
Legal counsel.
I'm tired. I'm getting tired. It's, uh, another attorney, yeah, to advise us.
Okay.
Those are the first three things we have to do. And then, then we can, once we have the attorney, and we have more data, maybe we can start arguing about additional duties, and if anything can be done before an intervening election.
Options, yeah.
Okay. Did, did you follow all that?
Yes.
Okay. Um, Councilmember Shields, you still have the floor.
I mean, that's fine with me. I'm happy to-
I can't send it to committee until I have some more data. I don't know about this, you know, I don't know about the court data, the court audit, but-
I, I guess I, like-
I don't even send it to committee, the-
Like, yeah, to me, yes and no, because the thing about, I mean, we'll get the outside council, but the thing about how many cases they see, and how well the court is functioning, all that, still, to me, doesn't point to what additional duties have they taken on since they were elected. So, that, to me, is part of the long-term 2040 vision, but i- if you guys also want to give-
Well, we definitely need to.
And, 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 yeah, then the council, maybe outside council changes their opinion on that. To me, to me, the duty is see municipal cases and figure out how to get that done. But I, I guess I'm just saying, so, it sounds to me like we want to have maybe more of a bigger conversation, um, longer-term vision centered on data, and maybe not try to put in place anything really short-term right now, which is, if that's the consensus?
Well, we don't wanna wait till 2040 to make a change, that's for sure. We need-
Right. But I'm, but I mean, you know, thinking about maybe a, a three or four-year plan of expanding compensation and rules, and, and all that.
Okay. Well, I think these are, I don't know, I don't know, we might have to, we might have to break this into parts, and bring the, bring an outside counsel in, and have a discussion that's not like this, so that we can get further, because I can't, I can't, we can't do it in closed session, it needs to be, um, these are open session types of questions.
Sure. But yeah, if we wanna wait until after the audit and have one big discussion, that's fine with me. I think it's good to have all the information at once.
Okay. Let me, let's process this, Mr. Dunning. I still have another council member that hasn't chimed in. Are you good? You still have the floor? Okay. Councilmember Rader.
Thank you, Mayor. I will make this very short and sweet. I've listened to all of this, it's all been very good. I appreciate all that you do. I know it's a big job, and it's hard. But I would agree with the mayor in that, just, uh, our court audit, the outside counsel, and more data to move forward, and however you wanna slice that up.
Okay.
Thank you.
I will apologize to Councilmember Funk for being short with him earlier, so I apologize, sir. I'm getting tired. So, and I still have a bunch of ordinances to read, so. You guys have been great, you've been patient with us as we try to work through this, but I'm gonna give you the last word with regard to, you kinda heard, you know, the commentary here. I think you hear that there's a will here to figure out a way. I think timing is a problem, and I think we, we need to get some data, get some data as well as more counsel. Is it, is that understandable?
Uh, it is. It's my understanding you're not asking us to provide additional, we're kinda worn out. I mean, we, we've tried to gather as much as we can.
Right.
So, as long, I just wanna make sure that there's not anything for us to gather. And I think, um, a good dial, we can be included in the dialogue with the outside counsel. I think it would've been more beneficial if we could've been a little more part of the process-
Okay.
Um, this last time, with someone who hadn't been to municipal court, I think, um, I, I think we could be helpful. And we can even agree to disagree. I'm not saying, to manipulate that individual, but it's just sharing of information-
Right.
And, and legal knowledge, and I think it could be helpful.
Okay. That's helpful, too. Thank you.
Okay.
And thank you for presenting tonight.
Thank you.
And thank you for serving Lee Summit.
Thank you.
Okay. Do you all wanna take a break, or do you wanna fly? Everybody wants to fly? Would you really? If you need to go, you can go. All right. Well, for those of you who have never seen us do this before, usually, we read these ordinances, and we take turns, but we do have a speed reader on the dais, Councilmember Shields, um, so, yeah. Thank you. So, we're gonna let her read these ordinances, especially considering, these first ones, we have to read twice. These are proposed ordinances forwarded from committee, so they have to actually be voted on twice. So, it will help to have Councilmember Shields do this for us, if, if she's willing, if she's up to it tonight. Okay. Um, well, then, we will begin with Bill Number 25-208. Councilmember Shields, would you read for second reading, please?
Thank you. I move for second reading, Bill Number 25-208, an ordinance authorizing the execution of a grant agreement between the state of Missouri and the state of Lee Summit, Missouri, for the Blue Shield Grant Program.
Thank you. I have motion to move to second reading, Bill Number 25-208 by Councilmember Shields, seconded by Councilmember Rader. Discussion? Seeing none, please cast your vote. All votes are in, please record the vote. It does pass eight to zero. Councilmember Shields, would you please?
Thank you. I now move for adoption of Bill Number 25-28, an ordinance authorizing the execution of a grant agreement between the state of Missouri and the state of Lee Summit, Missouri, for the Blue Shield Grant Program.
Thank you. I have a motion to adopt, Bill Number 25-208 by Councilmember Shields, seconded by Councilmember Rader. Discussion? Please cast your vote. Oh, that vote, that, that one is unanimous as well, please record the vote. So, it's adopted. Councilmember Shields, Bill Number 25-209, please.
Thank you. I now move for second reading, Bill Number 25-209, an ordinance authorizing the purchase of one aerial lift truck for the Public Works Traffic Division, and for the use of approved forceful contract number 110421-TIM, and Lee Summit contract number 2025-044, for the purchase of the cabin chassis not to exceed $196,941.62, and authorizing the city manager to execute the same for the state of Lee Summit, Missouri.
Thank you. I have motion to move to second reading, Bill Number 25-209 by Councilmember Shields, seconded by Councilmember Carlisle. Discussion? Seeing none, please cast your vote. All votes are in, please record the vote. It goes to second reading. Councilmember Shields, would you please?
Thank you. I move for adoption of Bill Number 25-209, an ordinance authorizing the purchase of one aerial lift truck for the Public Works Traffic Division, and the use of approved forceful contract number 110421-TIM, and Lee Summit contract number 2025-044, for the purchase of the cabin chassis not to exceed $196,941.62, and authorizing the city manager to execute the same for the state of Lee Summit, Missouri.
Thank you. We have motion to adopt, Bill Number 25-209 by Councilmember Shields, seconded by Councilmember Carlisle. Discussion? Please cast your vote. All votes are in, please record the vote. That bill's adopted unanimously. Thank you. Councilmember Shields, Bill Number 25-210, please.
Thank you. I move for second reading, Bill Number 25-210, an ordinance authorizing the purchase of one water department service truck using current equipment contracts for the purchase for a total cost of $237,739, and authorizing the city manager to execute all related necessary documents by and on behalf of the city of Lee Summit, Missouri.
Thank you. I have motion to move to second reading, Bill Number 25-210 by Councilmember Shields, seconded by Councilmember Carlisle. Seeing none, please cast your vote. All votes are in, please record the vote. It does go to second reading. Councilmember Shields, would you please?
Thank you. I now move for adoption of Bill Number 25-210, an ordinance authorizing the purchase of one water department service truck using current equipment contracts for the purchase for a total cost of $237,739, and authorizing the city manager to execute all related necessary documents by and on behalf of the city of Lee Summit, Missouri.
Thank you. I have motion to adopt, Bill Number 25-210 by Councilmember Shields, seconded by Councilmember Carlisle. Discussion? Please cast your vote. I need one.
We need a vote.
All votes are in, please record the vote. It goes, it's adopted unanimously. Thank you. Councilmember Shields, would you please read Bill 25-211?
Thank you. I move for second reading, Bill Number 25-211, an ordinance approving amendment number 12 to the budget for fiscal year ending June 30, 2025, as adopted by ordinances 9936, 9937, 9938, 9939, 9940, by amending the authorized expenditures for the city.
Thank you. I have motion to move to second reading, Bill Number 25-11 by Council, 211 by Councilmember Shields, seconded by Councilmember Rader. Seeing none, please cast your vote. All votes are in, please record the vote. It is unanimous, goes to second reading. Councilmember Shields, would you please?
Thank you. I now move for adoption of Bill Number 25-211, an ordinance approving amendment number 12 to the budget for fiscal year ending June 30, 2025, by adopted, as adopted by ordinances 9936, 9937, 9938, 9939, and 9940, by amending the authorized expenditures for the city.
Thank you. We have motion to adopt, bill number 25-211 by councilmember Shields, seconded by councilmember Pryor. Discussion? Please cast your vote. All votes are in. Please record the vote. That bill is adopted unanimously. Thank you. Councilmember Shields, bill number 25-212, please.
I move for second reading, bill number 25-212, an ordinance approving amendment number two to the budget for fiscal year ending June 30, 2026, as adopted by ordinances 10132, 10133, 10136, 10137, and 10138 by amending the authorized expenditures for the city.
Thank you. We have motion to move to second reading, bill number 25-212 by councilmember Shields, seconded by councilmember Carlisle. Seeing none, please cast your vote. All votes are in. Please record the vote. Does go to second reading. Councilmember Shields, would you please?
Thank you. I now move for adoption of bill number 25-212, an ordinance approving amendment number two to the budget for fiscal year ending June 30, 2026, as adopted by ordinances 10132, 10133, 10136, 10137, and 10138 by amending the authorized expenditures for the city.
Thank you. We have motion to adopt, bill number 25-212 by councilmember Shields, seconded by Mayor Potem Lopez. Discussion? Please cast your vote. All votes are in. Please record the vote. It is adopted unanimously. Thank you. We'll have Mr. Dunning come up after you read this and talk about this one. But councilmember Shields, would you please read bill number 25-213?
Yep. I move for second reading, bill number 25-213, an ordinance authorizing the approval of a two-year contract with Britain Strategies for Leadership Development and Executive Coaching for Management Team in the amount not to exceed $274,300 and authorizing the city manager to execute the same by and on behalf of the city of Lee Summit, Missouri.
Thank you. We have a motion to move to second reading, bill number 25-213 by councilmember Shields, seconded by councilmember Rader. Mr. Dunning, what's this, what's this one? We were, we were going to have you speak to on this one.
Yeah, thank you. Presented this to Finance and Budget and gave some background and some framework for this proposal. So we talk a lot about, on your agenda is a lot of investments in equipment, technology, and things of that nature. This is different. This is an investment in our leadership team, myself included. And so what this entails is a, I'll say it's a multi-year process. It's a multi-budget process. So this amount that's in this would not come out of one fiscal year's budget. Quite honestly, it would come out of three fiscal year budgets if we were to pursue, pursue this. So my observation as your city manager for the last three years, we've had quite a change in our leadership over the past five years. We've had a long, a number of long-tenured directors and leaders within the organization retire. That's a lot of institutional knowledge that's left. Our leadership team at this point includes a variety of folks with leadership here in Lee Summit, but also leadership coming from other organizations. And so as I've observed our interactions with our team, and we are, and I told Finance and Budget this, we're doing a lot of great work. There's a lot on our plate. There's a lot of tension. There's a lot of stress in our leadership levels. And as we go about doing this good work, one of the things that we can do, and I can certainly do a better job of, is pulling ourselves out of that daily grind and saying, how are we performing? And what I learned in many of the sessions that I just came back from ICMA, and many of those presentations that I attended were intentional around this space, and what we are pursuing is pretty much spot on on what these other high-performing organizations chose to do. So it's a big investment in our leadership team to go through not only just how can we function at a higher level as a leadership team, but us individually as leaders. So there's an executive coaching perspective to this. The hope is that together as a team and as individuals, we, we get, we shift away from managing what's on our plates to leading and show, in strategic leadership for this organization. So that's a summary. I know that's kind of a brief summary, but that's what we hope to achieve through this. As part of this process, there would be a phase where there's stakeholder engagement input from you all as our governing body into how we're performing as a team. So it's, it's not just us as a team having this interaction. We seek feedback from stakeholders as well. Happy to answer any questions about the proposal.
Yes. Okay. Councilmember Pryor?
Thank you. Do other cities do this?
Well, some that were presenting at ICMA did to this level. Thank you for the question, because it reminds me that this is not a, you know, just a have a management team retreat one day session and talk about this. This is a, this is a journey where we'll, we'll be pursuing this and then coming together as a team and then some executive coaching on, behind that. So it's the first time, to my knowledge, this organization has gone to this extent, but not, not, it's not customary, I'd say, to this level.
Okay. Councilmember?
I have a lot of questions, but I'm not going to ask them right now.
You can.
So no, no, I don't think they're appropriate questions. So no, I'm not, yeah, but thanks.
Okay. Councilmember Hodges?
I, I'm probably a little bit on the same lines as what Councilmember Pryor is not wanting to ask, but I have a hard time stomaching spending $274,300 of taxpayer dollars for creating, I don't know, and correct me if I'm wrong, but it sounds like it's creating an atmosphere of more leadership, but I feel like that falls on you to create that atmosphere in this building, and that's why we're paying you, which I think you're a great leader. But I don't think we need to be paying $274,000 for something that you're fully, fully capable of. And I mean that as a compliment.
I appreciate that.
I think you are. So I, I'm just going to be honest, I don't feel comfortable doing this. And I don't think it's the most wise way to be spending tax dollars when we're saying no to a lot of things that the taxpayers actually need. So I can't, in good faith, be, be okay with something like this when I think you are fully capable of doing it. So thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Is this multi-year?
Yeah, it'd be over at least a two-year period.
And then how many, what, is it department heads?
Yeah, it's our leadership team. So that includes 15, 15 of us, assistant city managers, myself included. I'd be a participant, not the facilitator, and then all our directors and chiefs.
Hmm. That's pretty intensive.
Yes.
Okay. Councilmember Shields?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll admit, I had, you know, some questions about this when it went through committee. It is a big dollar-ticket item. Why I supported it coming out of committee were a couple of things. One is that I agree that we put it on you to lead this team and to lead this city, but if you come to me and tell me this is the resource that you need to effectuate that vision, and that, and that I want to give you the opportunity to do that, and also that when we talked about where the funding was coming from, that it is taxpayer dollars, but it doesn't require a budget amendment. It's within kind of your discretionary city manager's budget. Can you talk a little bit about the funding mechanism and kind of what those dollars are targeted for generally and why you felt it would be a good idea to spend them on this?
Yeah, so like I mentioned, it'd be over really three budget periods that we would fund this fully. In looking at our current budget, would not seek to increase budget in order to accommodate this. We have realized some savings in some of the other city manager audit, audits that we are doing. There is city manager contingency that I would, that I would put towards this, and then also we are, within admin, we have some salary savings due to some attrition and the ways that we've structured admin at this point. So through numerous different ways, we can find funding without increasing the budget to put this resource into place.
Again, I definitely understand the hesitancy of my colleagues, but I, I do want to give you the opportunity to get the resources that you need to execute on the vision that, that you have. And I, I, I always am skeptical of consultants. I hope that this is money well spent. I, I admit, I'm, when I came into the city, I was very skeptical of things like, like strategic plans generally. I'm like, why do we need this big plan to tell us what to do that we already know what we want to do? But I do think it's helpful to have something that gives you a chance to step back and plan how you want to execute on things, give yourself the resources to do that, the time to think it through, that I think that does pay dividends, that when you're not just bouncing from thing to thing and have time to, to really make a good plan, that you can use the resources that you have more effectively. So that's, that's why I'm willing to support this, but I really hope that it is effective, and I really hope that you will report out to us kind of the outcomes that you see and the benefits that you end up seeing. So that's.
That's the expectation.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
Okay. Thank you. Councilmember Funk?
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Dunning, I know as councilmember Shields said, we talked through this, Finance and Budget, and we were all supportive to move this to the full council. I think councilmember Lovell asked the question. I mean, it's a significant amount of money. What, what will we see as a council as the end result of this? Is there a report?
What are the deliverables?
Yes.
Yes. Let me find those. I've read those off within the scope here. Sorry, should have had that at my, so there will be, there's a discovery and assessment summary report, right? That's the initial phase that will be completed. There will be a customized executive development plan, so we'll have a roadmap on what we as a team can be working towards. Group coaching, workshop materials, reports along the way. There will be executive team individual touchpoints. So that's more at, at an individual level. What are we doing individually to get better as a leader, as a team? There'll be a final executive leadership impact report and an operational sustainability plan. So not just put it into place, but how do you keep it in place and keep growing it? So different components along the way. I'm fully transparent, be happy to share appropriate reports with, with you all as our governing body.
Thank you, Mayor. That's all I have.
Thank you. Councilmember Rader?
Well, thank you, Mayor. I'm, I'm the first one to agree that coaching is important. Leadership coaching is important. However, in this case, it, it seems like an awful lot of money to be spent on that. And I would worry that what our constituents would be thinking and in the fact that, you know, you are the head of the city, and that, you know, why is it that we would have to spend that kind of money for, for coaching and leadership coaching? So I, I'm not really sure. I mean, I questioned it, the cost. To be honest with you, I've questioned the cost and whether I feel like, I think it's wise to spend money on things like that, but I don't know about that much money. So I think that would be my holdback, would just be very, very expensive, I mean almost $300,000 for coaching. I, I don't think that I'm going to be able to support that. I think is what I'm telling you, is I just feel like there's going to, we're going to get some pushback on this one from our, from our taxpayers. Thank you. Thanks, Mayor.
Okay. Thank you. Councilmember Carlisle?
Thank you, Mayor. And I would just, I understand the concerns of, of my colleagues here on the dais, but what I would say and the way I look at this is that we always say, not just here from the dais, but also here in Lee Summit, that our biggest investment is our people and our people that work for us, and retaining those highly skilled people is very important to us. And if the leader of our company and of all of these highly skilled people is coming to us and saying, I would like for us to have more training so that we can better coach everyone for each leader, then I think it's important to give him that. So this, I, I understand that it's almost $300,000. They did say it's a two-year contract, also that it comes out of three budget cycles. But I think it's very important to have a leadership team that, that knows how to work, coach, and lead those people that they are in charge of. So that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Potem Lopez?
Thanks, Mayor. I, last night, I sat on the Finance and Budget Committee meeting, in the meeting, and made the comment last night, and I'll make it again, kind of like some of my colleagues have said, I also agree in investing in our staff and professional development and growth opportunities. I agreed to forward it to full council for consideration, but I still had a lot of, I was very skeptical about the amount. And kind of like the comments that have been stated already, I think that's a significant investment, and I think there's many, many ways to invest in professional development. I would like to see, like councilmember Rader said, for us to maybe look into other alternative, probably more feasible price programs. I know this was presented to Finance and Budget last night, but quite frankly, it was just presented to us without really, have given us the opportunity to really critique or take a deep dive as to what the program was. I would like to see a little bit more research done and see if there's more cost-effective ways to provide these kind of professional development resources. And so I think tonight I would not be in support of it either.
Well, there's eight of us, so I'll just chime in here. I, I'm a, I'm a big believer in coaching, too, just because of the profession I'm in. I've coached hundreds and hundreds, but I've also been coached in executive coaching, and I got, I, I was shocked how much I got out of it. I was also shocked at how much it cost. So I would say, you know, I did the numbers on this, 15 people. It's, you know, it, you know, I would have, if I would have done the numbers without seeing the total and said, okay, how much is this going to cost for 15 people, I would have thought it would have been more money, based on the executive coaching programs that I've seen and been through. So therefore, I understand the money, the amount. I guess, Mr. Dunning, I'm willing to support this if you will just know that, you know, I paid for that training for myself, that executive training. If, if, if you're going to give this elite, or, you know, executive training to, you know, the department heads, your leadership team, they got to have buy-in, they got to get our money's worth, and you got to, you got to kind of make sure that, that, that they're, that they're fully, fully realize that we, the council, made a commitment, put this money towards them, we believe in them, and like, we just need that assurance, and then I'm ready to vote on this and get this, move past this item.
Yeah. Total expectation on return on investment.
This is a, this is a gift to the leadership team, because I think it's very valuable, but we got to know that it's going to be, go ahead, sir.
Yeah. Return on investment, right?
Yep. All right. Councilmember Shields?
Just, and I apologize, this passed nine o'clock at night, so if this was already said, I apologize. But one thing that we did talk about in committee was just the level of turnover that we've had in leadership, not for any bad reasons, it's just we've had a lot of long-serving staff that have retired and a lot of new folks in director positions and assistant city manager and city manager positions, and that, that's why it might be useful to have something like this at this time. I guess the only other thing I want to say is, I know councilmember Lovell had some, some good comments about this in committee. Should we maybe hold this over until he's back with us next week? Would that be appropriate to motion to table it for now?
We can, but, one, two, three. I'm counting votes here. Are we tied?
I think so. Do that any other time.
Who's a negative over there? You are? Okay. I didn't, I didn't read that. I'm sorry. I missed that. Yeah, a tie, a tie wouldn't pass. Somebody has to make a motion if they want to, and then we'd vote on it. It might not pass to table it.
I move to, to table, bill number 25-213.
To a date certain?
Sure, to a date certain of November 11th. Do we have a meeting next week?
No. No. Next meeting will be the 18th.
To a date certain of November 18th.
Second.
I have a motion to table by councilmember Shields, seconded by councilmember Carlisle. Discussion on the table. Anybody want to?
I'm on there.
Councilmember Hodges? Do you want to comment?
Yeah. Well, I guess I've just, I'm unclear as to why we're tabling it since there's one council member not here. I'm not sure when else we don't vote on something because somebody's not attending. I just don't, it sounds like we're picking and choosing just to get it to sway a certain way.
Well, when we vote on the motion, it should be, it should be a tie again, so it probably won't pass.
Okay. I don't know. It just seemed weird to, to do that and mention councilmember Lovell. Nothing against him. I just, it just sounded odd, the way we were phrasing it.
But you never know. Maybe one of the four noes might say, well, yeah, let's bring, let's, let's, I'm going to, let's see what councilmember Lovell says. So I don't know. I don't know how that's going to go.
Okay.
I would make your case.
No, I mean, it just, it just, it didn't sound super ethical.
Mr. Head, you can make a motion to table. Yeah.
Right. But it just, it was based off of a certain council member not being able to vote, and to vote, and we don't usually do that, so that's why I was kind of confused.
I totally agree, we don't usually do that, but I know, I know there's a lot of stories of people doing it from previous councils. Mr. Dunning's shared with me the numerous examples. He's always telling me these, you know, well, I remember this one time when so-and-so, even though they weren't for it, they tabled it because they wanted to wait till the full council was there, and I was like, okay.
Okay. It just, I just want to make sure it doesn't sound like we're swaying a vote based off of what numbers we were counting up in our head, so that was it, it just seemed odd to me.
Yeah. No, I, I understand. It is, it is out of the ordinary, but it's, you can table, you can motion to table like, like she did. Councilmember Shields, are, are you in queue?
Um, yeah, I guess, I was just going to say I would support the motion to table that I made, because I don't, I don't see a clear consensus on the dais, and I'd just like to have, see what the full council's consensus is. We don't, we don't often have votes that are this closely split, so.
Right. Okay.
That's, that's the reason why I made the motion. Thank you.
Understood. So, we have a motion on the table, and that is what you're about to vote on. So, if you, if you, yes, if, motion to table, on the table, yeah. Motion to table, so if you support pushing this till the next meeting in two weeks, you'd be a, a, an I, and otherwise you're a no. Please cast your vote. All votes are in, please record the vote. So, it does pass to push it to the next meeting. And we'll let, we'll let, we'll make the decision. Mr. Dunning, maybe, maybe you provide us a report. Maybe you send us a report on this one. Like, we can go through and read, read the, the data, but maybe you, if you really want this for your staff, maybe you can add some information to us in, you know, in a, in an email?
Yep. Can provide that.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Um, goodness, where are we?
Bill number 25-214, if you'd like, Mayor.
Please.
All right, I move for second reading, Bill number 25-214, ordinance authorizing city manager to execute a contract with Kansas City Audiovisual for a multi-department audiovisual system project in a not-to-exceed amount of $651,347 to provide the purchase of audiovisual equipment, installation, maintenance, and support for various conference rooms for the city of Lee Summit, Missouri.
Thank you. We have a motion to move to second reading, Bill number 25-214, by Councilmember Shields, seconded by Councilmember Carlisle. Discussion. Seeing none, please cast your vote. All votes are in, please record the vote. Does move to second reading, Councilmember Shields, would you please?
Thank you, and I move for adoption of Bill number 25-214, ordinance authorizing the city manager to execute a contract with Kansas City Audiovisual for a multi-department audiovisual system project in a not-to-exceed amount of $651,347 to provide the purchase of audiovisual equipment, installation, maintenance, and support for various conference rooms for the city of Lee Summit, Missouri.
Thank you. We have a motion to move to second reading, Bill number 25-214, by Councilmember Shields, seconded by Councilmember Carlisle. Discussion. Please cast your vote. All votes are in, oh, yeah, now all votes are in, please cast, please record the vote. Unanimously adopted. Thank you, Councilmember Shields, Bill number 25-215, please.
Thank you, I move for second reading, Bill number 25-215, ordinance authorizing the city manager to execute an agreement with Constant Technologies for Audiovisual Video While Display Dispatch Feeds Analytics and Secure Communication Infrastructure, including equipment, furniture, and services for the Joint Operations Center in a not-to-exceed amount of $1,557,824.75 for the city of Lee Summit, Missouri.
Thank you. We have a motion to move to second reading, Bill number 25-215, is it 215?
Yes.
215, by Councilmember Shields, seconded by Councilmember Funk. Seeing none, please cast your vote. All votes are in, please record the vote. Moves to second reading, Councilmember Shields, would you please?
Thank you, I move for adoption of Bill number 25-215, an ordinance authorizing the city manager to execute an agreement with Constant Technologies for Audiovisual Video While Display Dispatch Feeds Analytics and Secure Communication Infrastructure, including equipment, furniture, and services for the Joint Operations Center in a not-to-exceed amount of $1,557,824.75 for the city of Lee Summit, Missouri.
Thank you. Have a motion to adopt Bill number 25-215, by Councilmember Shields, seconded by Councilmember Funk. Discussion. Please cast your vote. All votes are in, please record the vote. Bill's adopted unanimously, thank you. Councilmember Shields, Bill number 25-216, please.
Thank you, I move for second reading, Bill number 25-216, ordinance authorizing the city manager to execute an agreement with Constant Technologies for the establishment of the real-time crime center video while technology and console integration in a not-to-exceed amount of $758,843.78 to provide for the purchase of equipment, console, furniture, and professional services for the city of Lee Summit, Missouri.
Thank you. Have a motion to move to second reading, Bill number 25-216, by Councilmember Shields, seconded by Mayor Tim Lopez. Discussion. Please cast your vote. All votes are in, please record the vote. Goes to second reading, Councilmember Shields, would you please?
Thank you, I now move for adoption of Bill number 25-216, an ordinance authorizing the city manager to execute an agreement with Constant Technologies for the establishment of the real-time crime center video while technology and console integration in a not-to-exceed amount of $758,843.78 to provide the purchase of equipment, console, furniture, and professional services for the city of Lee Summit, Missouri.
Thank you. We have a motion to adopt Bill number 25-216, by Councilmember Shields, seconded by Councilmember Carlisle. Discussion. Please cast your vote. All votes are in, please record the vote. It's adopted unanimously, thank you. Councilmember Shields, Bill number 25-217, please.
Thank you, I move for second reading, Bill number 25-217, an ordinance approving the purchase of virtual reality training system from V-Armed Inc. for an amount not to exceed $351,000, and authorizing the city manager to execute the same buy-in on behalf of the city of Lee Summit, Missouri.
Thank you. Have a motion to move to second reading, Bill, Bill number 25-217, by Councilmember Shields, seconded by Councilmember Carlisle. Discussion. Councilmember Shields, yes?
Just want to say, this looks like a really amazing, cutting-edge technology system, and they said maybe we could try it out at new council member orientations, so.
Really?
I mean, I don't think they made any promises, but could be.
Okay. Very good, thank you. All right. Please cast your vote. You don't like what? Oh. You don't like those headsets? All, no, I need one more vote. All votes are in, please record the vote. Goes to second reading unanimously, Councilmember Shields, would you please?
Thank you, I now move for adoption, Bill number 25-217, an ordinance approving the purchase of virtual reality training system from V-Armed Inc. for an amount not to exceed $351,000, and authorizing the city manager to execute the same buy-in on behalf of the city of Lee Summit, Missouri.
Thank you. We have a motion to adopt Bill number 25-217, by Councilmember Shields, seconded by Councilmember Carlisle. Discussion. Please cast your vote. All votes are in, please record the vote. It's unanimous, adopted. Councilmember Shields, Bill number 25-218, please.
Thank you, I move for second reading, Bill number 25-218, an ordinance approving an agreement between the city of Lee Summit, Missouri and Zibix for the purchase of dispatching consoles and authorizing the city manager to execute the same buy-in on behalf of the city of Lee Summit, Missouri.
Thank you. Have a motion to move to second reading, Bill number 25-218, by Councilmember Shields, seconded by Councilmember Carlisle. Discussion. Seeing none, please cast your vote. All votes are in, please record the vote. Goes to second reading, Councilmember Shields, would you please?
Thank you, I now move for adoption of Bill number 25-218, an ordinance approving an agreement between the city of Lee Summit, Missouri and Zibix for the purchase of dispatching consoles and authorizing the city manager to execute the same buy-in on behalf of the city of Lee Summit, Missouri.
We have a motion to adopt Bill number 25-218, by Councilmember Shields, seconded by Councilmember Carlisle. Discussion. Please cast your vote. All votes are in, please record the vote. It's bills adopted unanimously. We goes to proposed ordinances, first reading, Councilmember Shields, would you please read? Bill number 25-219.
Thank you, I move for second reading, Bill number 25-219, an ordinance submitting the electors of the city of Lee Summit, Missouri at the election on August, submitting to the electors of the city of Lee Summit, Missouri at the election on August 4th, 2026, the question of whether the city of Lee Summit shall impose a stormwater management sales tax of one quarter of 1% for the purpose of providing funding for stormwater management and flood mitigation.
Thank you. Have a motion to move to second reading. Bill number 25-219, by Councilmember Shields, seconded by Councilmember Carlisle. Discussion. Seeing none, please cast your vote. All votes are in, please record the vote. It's unanimous, goes to second reading. Thank you. Councilmember Shields, Bill number 25-222, 220, please.
Thank you, I move for second reading, Bill number 25-220, an ordinance approving the memorandum of understanding between LSR 7 and the city of Lee Summit for the fire department to provide a fire safety education program to LSR 7 elementary students, authorizing the mayor to execute an agreement for the same.
Thank you. Have a motion to move to second reading, Bill number 25-220, by Councilmember Shields, seconded by Councilmember Carlisle. Looks like we got a couple of people here that have been patient all night long. Holy cow. Thank you for coming. Councilmember, you wanted to present first, or you have a question first?
That was.
Oh, very good. Councilmember Rader was going to, was going to tee it up for you.
On down.
Yep.
Mayor and council, good evening. So, this request is to allow fire department personnel to go into the LSR 7 elementary schools and start presenting our fire education program. Historically, the fire department's done it since COVID, we haven't been back into the schools. That's given us some time to kind of revamp the program, modernize things, and get that ready, and so now we're ready to move forward with the school district.
All right. Are you going to be able to get up early and make it to school tomorrow, after this night?
I'm asking for some leniency on that, but, yeah.
Yep. We have a question for you, council, or a comment, Councilmember Pryor.
Thank you. So, I'm glad to see this again, launched again, but the elementary schools that are Blue Springs School District that are in Lee Summit, do you guys do those also, or is that CJC that comes in and does those?
That's, that's CJC.
Is it? Okay. Yep. All right. Thank you.
Yes. Councilmember Shields, Carlisle.
Thank you. So, are we going to have the, the mini-fire park station thing soon for the?
Whoa, 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 what is this?
Yes, Safety Town, that's what it was called.
Safety Town. I, I did want to clarify your question about the schools that we do go to. So, all the schools within the corporate city limits of Lee Summit, we deliver the program at. There are two that we do not currently, well, one that we never did, Woodland Trails, no, not Woodland Trails, Sunset, well, not on 150, East 150, that's in Kansas City. The other one, we'll have to have discussions with, with Southern Jackson County is Mason Elementary, since that is in their district, out, out by Lake Watawana.
Okay.
So, I just want to, I just want to clarify that.
But the ones that are Blue Springs School District that are in the city?
We do.
You do those?
Yes.
Just not the ones outside of the city that are Lee Summit School District?
Correct.
Okay.
Yep.
That makes sense. Kind of. I wish we did all of them, even if, like, the Lee Summit School District ones, but...
Well, so, that, that's, that's one thing that, like I said, if we have those conversations, they're amenable to us, going in there and doing that, we're happy to do it, but that's what, those are the conversations we have had.
It's such a good, cool, the kids just love it, so I think all LSR 7 kids should get to experience it.
And also, this program also includes all the private schools, with the MOU at Lee Summit, LSR 7 is the only one that has requested an MOU to deliver this program again.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you. The question was about Safety Town.
Safety Town. Safety Town is a parks facility, and we are wrapping up site analysis on two sites. I think we'll be choosing our site fairly soon, and then after that, we will start our design process, so that's where we are.
Okay, so the fire department doesn't get to play with that one?
No, they'll be invited to play.
Okay. Thank you.
Again, thank you for coming tonight. All right. Seeing no further discussion or comments, please cast your vote. All votes are in, please record the vote. Passes unanimously to second reading, thank you. That was 220.
Yep.
Councilmember Shields, Bill number 25-221, please.
Thank you, I move for second reading, Bill number 25-221, ordinance approving a transfer agreement among Red Summit Fair LLC, Miriam North Bell LLC, Station Miriam 135, I-3563 LLC, Summit Fair Investors 2025 LLC, Papa Kane MSF LLC, DeSoto Farms LLC, Compton Farms LLC, Red Lee Summit East LLC, and the city of Lee Summit, Missouri for the transfer of property in Lee Summit East Summit Fair Tax Increment Financing Redevelopment Area.
All right, very good. We have a motion to move to second reading, Bill number 25-221, by Councilmember Shields, seconded by Councilmember Funk. We have a bunch of people that came tonight and stayed this whole time just to see what we do on this, so for, this is up for discussion. Councilmember Rader, you want to start us off?
Yes. I would love for all these people, these high-profile presenters, to come up and tell us all about, about the transfer agreement with Red.
Um, I can have Mr. Bouchette do that, yeah. And then we can go from there.
Thank you. I can provide a, a short summary. I, first, I will note that I think we set a new record for number of presenters listed on a single item on your agenda. And that is because, for items like this, I typically ask the applicant who they would like us to list as potential presenters, because they might be talking with you, and that's the list that resulted. We've got representatives of the Red Development Team and the Block and Company Team sitting back here patiently listening to our city business. These are two companion ordinances that are associated with Summit Fair. The city has a TIF contract with Red Development, and the TIF contract allows the city to approve transfers of property and transfers of developer interests in the, in the developer entity that we have a contract with. And so, these two companion items, the first ordinance would approve the transfer agreement with the buyer being the trans, the transferee in this case. It's a series of buyers that will be, I think the, the best way to summarize it would be that Block and Company is at the helm of most of these entities, but these are, these are the purchasing entities that would purchase the remaining balance of the property that's owned by Red in the shopping center area. And there's a map that I included in your meeting packet, which I will put here, and the Red highlights the property that's still owned by Red, and so this would be the property that transfers to this ownership group if you approved the first ordinance. And then the second ordinance approves an assignment agreement from Red to Block and Company, and Block and Company would essentially be stepping into the shoes of Red Development as the, what I would call the capital D developer under the TIF contract. And so, Block and Company will essentially, and, and the various entities will take over ownership of the remaining property that you see here on the map that's currently owned by Red, and Block and Company, through a special purpose entity, would become the capital D developer under the TIF contract and its relationship with the, with the city for the continuation of the TIF, TIF plan.
Thank you. Councilmember Rader?
I would just like to ask, are there any major changes that they plan to do, that the new development team plans to do?
I think we could have them address that question.
Thank you.
Mr. Block, you want to send someone to maybe say a few words about what changes Are you still awake to be able to give this spiel?
I have very much appreciation for your duties this evening.
Thank you.
You've done a wonderful job of speaking up all of y'all. Congratulations individually. Now, my name is David Block, I am with Block and Company, Inc. Realtors. We are a major player for, I don't know, maybe forty-some-odd years in Lee Summit, have done multiple projects throughout the marketplace, including, you know, many of the shopping centers along 291. In fact, I think one of them even goes back 50 years now that I think about it. And, you know, our intent is to try and bring in to Summit Fair the types of users that you all would like to see. Who are we missing? Who would we like there? So, the present ownership, which is up here represented by these guys sleeping in the back row, oh, wait, one of them's up. These guys have, are from Arizona, except for one of them that does work here, Frank, who works at the property, who we intend to keep on because he's been doing a very good job, him and a couple of the other existing employees would stay on. The basic management locally would be run the way it has been run because we met with all of the tenants, and they indicated that they were satisfied that the existing managers, which are local, have been doing a pretty good job. The leasing has been done from Arizona. We, on the other hand, are here in Kansas City, have had an office, we don't at the moment, but we had an office out here with William Glasgow for many, many years, and Bill Moss still with us, and we have been working on a new, updated, exciting, high-energy types of tenants for men, for women, for entertainment, and, you know, what else do we need? And, and the first thing that we ordinarily do is we go to the existing tenants, and then we go to the marketplace, and we go to the city fathers and mothers like you guys and go, who do we need out here? You know, what other kinds of businesses do you see in other places that y'all go that you would like us to go after and try and bring? I've got about 30, 40 agents that work for me, we're all Kansas City people, number of the people with, with my office live in Lee Summit, I've got a place in Lee Summit, and I'm just truly very excited about this opportunity that, that is afforded us through the Red ownership, who has run it very efficiently for many, many years, and now I think we have the opportunity to turn it into a truly first-class tenant mix shopping center with a lot more of public events and, you know, other kinds of, of, of street fairs and local opportunities, not to compete with what you've got downtown with that first-class market that you have done across the street, but to something that would supplement things that are presently not here. And, you know, again, I'm very serious about anything that y'all think should be out there, help us, help you guys bring the right users to come to your city. So, what else can I ask or answer for you?
I love it. I know I'm not supposed to say love, but I do.
All right, it's fine.
Thank you.
Thank you. We've got a couple of people that might have questions.
Well, I'm, I'm here to answer anything that, that you would like.
All right. Thank you, sir.
You bet.
Councilmember Carlisle.
Thank you, Mayor. My question's actually for staff. Can you tell me how long we have left on this TIF plan? Sorry, I should have asked that earlier.
Let me do the math here. The TIF plan is 17 years old, I think, so that means six more years on the TIF.
Okay. Thank you.
Roughly.
Thank you. Councilmember Pryor.
Thank you. So, I have a lot of opinions on what we should have here, but, so I'll just start, since
Thank you, so I have a lot of opinions on what we should have here, but, so I'll just start, since you asked. We need more children things, things to do with families, the parking over there is not good, it's actually terrible, and I feel like that keeps a lot of people from even utilizing that area, because parking's terrible. And so maybe like redoing some of the parking. Parkplace, I'm a big fan of how, and you kind of touched on it a little bit, but the lawn games and just things for families that bring families, that are family-friendly, we don't have a lot of that in our city. Walkability, make it walkable, I feel like it's not necessarily super walkable. The sidewalks are great, but it's just, they're, maybe a little more walkable. But we need shopping areas kind of like at Town Center, like, we need the altered states that we can go to, we don't have really anything, if, if there's, well, for instance, when my daughter was going to homecoming, there was hardly anywhere in Lee Summit. We, everyone has to go to the Overland, to the Kansas side to get any sort of a homecoming dress, any sort of a dress for any sort of a formal function, anything. So just some of the stores that are maybe at Town Center, kind of tailor them to Lee Summit a little bit, and bring some of that over here, because we desperately need it, and I truly think we could support it. I don't know, one of the things I like to do is I like to call different businesses and I ask them, not all businesses do this, but they do the breakdown by the, by zip code on, on what, who's coming from what area, and I would, I'm pretty positive that Altered State probably has a large percentage, if they break down by zip code, that come from our city, that come from Lee Summit, that shop over there. So, but yeah, so that's, that's all I have for right now, of course Trader Joe's, but that's what everyone says, huh?
That's our first call, Mark.
Altered State? Yes, that would be great, and then of course, this is high, and this isn't gonna truly happen, but the Apple Store, that would be awesome, to not have to go to the Plaza or to Leewood to go to the Apple Store. I don't know what criteria they look for, I know that I've, like, I've done the ChatGPT thing to see if they're expanding, and they're not in our country necessarily, they are in other countries, but, so yeah. But feel free to reach out to me via email, and I will give you all my opinions on what should be here. Yes, sounds great, and I, yeah, that's all for right now, but thank you.
Okay, thank you. I'm worried that you're gonna bring some of these things, and my wife already, and my daughter both are over there quite a bit, so they're gonna be over there even more, it sounds like.
You need their email, by the way. When I ask them directions.
Yeah. Okay, well, any other discussion? Okay, then please cast your vote. All votes are in, please record the vote, it does pass unanimously, and I would say, on behalf of the council, Mr. Block and Company, thank you for continuing to invest in Lee Summit.
I want to thank all of you, it's been an interesting evening, I'm serious, I, I said I have a lot of respect, but I would say, I am very serious. If you have users and people that you think should be out there, you call me.
All right.
And your city manager, everybody over there's got my number.
We're on it.
Have a lovely evening.
You too, thank you. Okay, it's only 8:30 in Arizona.
Actually, 9:30.
Oh! Oh, okay.
Thank you guys for everything, we appreciate it.
Thank you. There's one more, yeah.
Well, can you just vote on that the same way?
Pretty much, it'll probably go that way. You, you're almost done, Councilmember Carlyle, or Shields, would you please read Bill number 25-222?
You know, whoever. I move for second reading Bill number 25-222, an ordinance approving an assignment agreement among Red Lee Summit East LLC, SF TIF LLC, and the city of Lee Summit, Missouri for the assignment of developers' interest in Lee Summit East Summit Fair Tax Increment Financing Redevelopment Area, yeah.
Thank you, have motion to move to second reading, Bill number 25-222, by Councilmember Shields, seconded by Councilmember Hodges, discussion? Seeing none, please cast your vote. All votes are in, please record the vote, it's unanimous, you guys can go now. It's unanimous. Thank you. That's it.
I don't get to stay longer?
All right, Councilmember Shields, Bill number 25-223, please.
Thank you, I move for second reading Bill number 25-223, an ordinance approving the tax credit purchase agreement between the city of Lee Summit, Missouri and US Bank National Association for the Green Street Project.
All right, thank you, we have motion to move to second reading Bill number 25-223, by Councilmember Shields, seconded by Councilmember Funk. Mr. Bushak, you, you did it. This is the, this is a lot of years of work. Yes? Like five, four, five years of work, five years, six years, I don't know.
This particular item took, I'd say, three years in the making, including two trips to Jeff City in our presentation.
I got to go with you, yeah. Well done, sir.
Thanks.
Very impressive. Okay, and thank you so much for, you know, this creativity. We got a motion and a second, please cast your vote. All votes, all votes are in, please record the vote, it does go to second reading unanimously, thank you all. Committee reports, wow, did you think we'd get here? Committee reports. Councilmember Shields.
You guys know everything we've been doing in finance and budget, because it covered half of our agenda tonight. But I did want to mention that Lee Summit EDC, I've been providing periodic updates, the strategic plan process is actually going pretty well. We had the initial draft strategic plan reviewed by the board, who gave some feedback, which has been incorporated, and that's now with city staff to look at and provide some input from the city's perspective, and hopefully will actually be adopted at the November meeting, if not the December meeting, so. The process is going on, just wanted to let everybody know.
They're supposed to have it to us by the end of the year for sure, so December, at the latest, yep, thank you. Yep. Okay. I'm not seeing any other reports, council comments? Councilmember Pryor?
Thank you.
Whoa, I lost you guys, whoever was on there.
Councilmember Rader was right after me. First, it was a full moon tonight, so I just feel like, I just feel like that should be said. And then second, so I've started asking people, this has to do with the trash, I've started asking people when they call me, that are against it, specifically one group, if, if they, if their HOA contracts out with trash. And overwhelmingly, I'd say the majority of the people that have called me that are against contracting with a trash company, I will just say, I will just say this, because I've maintained this, that I am all for a locally-owned company, but overwhelmingly, people are like, yes, my neighborhood does contract out. And so I just feel like, I just feel like I want to say this, I don't understand why I've been called a socialist, I've been yelled at, I've been called a communist, I've been told I'm anti-Constitution for being the Chair of Public Works and discussing all of this trash, the Trash Initiative. But I don't understand why somebody who has their neighborhood already contracting with one provider, they're getting the benefits of having one trash company in their neighborhood, not ten speeding down their street, one company backing up down their street, almost running over their kids, because they don't watch out for people. They're, they're getting the benefits of not having multiple trash companies in their neighborhood. They're already getting the benefits of, of a lower, a lower-cost trash service. I don't understand why, why anybody would be fighting against so hard, other people getting the benefits in the, in the city, the same benefits they're already receiving. I don't understand it, it doesn't make sense to me, but, and I also wanted to say, I don't think anyone up here on council is, has received any money from any of the trash haulers. Nobody is getting sent on elaborate vacations for many of the trash haulers, so I just wanted to clear those two things up. But.
Well, I'm sorry that that's happening, they can, you know, be against it, but they shouldn't be, they shouldn't be, you know, making all those accusations of, of you or others and saying bad things about you, so I'm sorry you're going through that.
They should, they can absolutely be against it, but I also don't understand the logic of if their neighborhood's already contracting, and they're already getting the benefits of a single hauler, why the rest of us can't experience, experience those benefits either, I don't, but, yep, so thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Rader.
I should have brought this up earlier, but I wanted to announce that on Saturday, November the 8th, which is the same day as the Veterans Day Parade, actually, that there's an open house at the Red Hawk Park, and I, I don't know, Joe's still around here, yeah, and who, that I find, that I fondly call Ricky Red, oh my God, Red Hawk Park, because I na, I didn't get a part in this, but I'm a liaison to the Parks Committee, or the Park Board. And I was so excited when they named it the Red Hawk Park, because I have a red hawk that sits in my tree outside my window, and I named him Ricky, which I know is too much information, but I think we're all getting punchy. Anyway, I just wanted to announce that it's 8:30, I believe it's at 2600 Old Port Road, which is over by Eagle Creek, yeah. If anybody has a chance to go to the open house, they're always wonderful, Parks Department's great. Yeah, don't go down prior. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, staff roundtable, Mr. Dunning?
Thank you, Mayor, I think every, everything, but one thing was mentioned that I had on my list, so thanks, we're all thinking alike, Recycle Fest we had last weekend, some interesting stats, 214 cars coming through, 21 bicycles, 62 pairs of shoes, 1,075 wine corks, 336 prescription glasses. Yeah, quite a few things recycled, so kudos to the community and Public Works and everybody that volunteered for that very, very successful Recycle Fest event, so, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. All right. Yeah. We're gonna go into closed session.
You can vote now.
No, we can do it, I think we can, Mr. Head can be expedient. Councilmember Shields, would you please?
Pursuant to section 610211 of the Vice Statutes, the state of Missouri pertaining to legal actions, causes of action, litigation involving a public governmental body and any confidential privileged communication between a public governmental body or its representatives and its attorneys that move to enter closed session.
Thank you, have motion to move to go into closed session by Councilmember Shields, seconded by Councilmember Hodges, discussion? Bye, everybody. Have a good night. Seeing none, roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Funk?
Aye.
Councilmember Rader?
Aye.
Member Lovell? Councilmember Hodges?
Aye.
Councilmember Pryor?
Aye.
Councilmember Carlyle?
Aye.
Councilmember Shields?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Lopez?
Aye.
Mayor Baird?
Aye.
Thank you all.